Feet and have a treat. We are here for our annual priority setting meeting. I am so excited. We've been doing this for about five years now. We started out with listening sessions and surveys and gathering information with the idea that the community needs to speak up, to direct us, and help us to understand what it is the community needs. We are only five members of the community. We're not the whole community. So we want to listen, we want to hear, and we want to incorporate that in policy decisions that we make. So welcome, everybody, and I think we can get started.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Welcome to the public. My name is Matthew Chittister. I'm the city manager here, and we're grateful for so much participation. This is a larger crowd than we normally have at these sessions, which is exciting. And the last time we did this in person was we were serving food with plastic gloves, no masks, because we thought that's what was going to keep us safe from COVID. And the rest is history. Do we need to start with a roll call?
See, Councilmember Brownstone is here, but shutting the door. Councilmember Rabeck?
Here.
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jimenez?
Here.
Mayor Penrose?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you, Jessica. I'll just do a very brief overview. Today is a working session. Everything we've done before this, including a pretty extensive report last night, were intended to provide the background or the context, to gather the public feedback and public input, so that today's session could be well-informed, but a chance for our council to really dig in and talk about what the next couple of years look like for our city and the areas we want to prioritize. We will have a brief report today from Ken Stiles, who's our finance manager. He'll talk just a little bit more about the budget and what we're looking at for the next couple of years. That's important context. I will recap a little bit on our current priorities, but our goal today is to get to work very quickly. Just a couple of items of business. If you need translation, we do have Spanish translation services there in the corner. There is snacks and coffee on the wall. Please help yourselves. After Ken's presentation, we will do public comment. You're welcome to speak. Like at a council meeting, if you'd like to speak, you can grab a speaker card from the front table and just hand it to Lisa here in the front, and she'll make sure we get it to Jessica. We just ask you to remember that this is a working session, and we want to get down to business as soon as possible, but we welcome your comments, especially if there's new or additional things you want to share that haven't been shared at past listening sessions. We will, at some point in the middle of the day, when we find a good breaking point, stop for lunch. It'll be kind of a working lunch for us, so we'll probably take about a 15-minute break, go to the restroom, grab our food, and then we'll come back to the table. If you, as the public, want to run out and grab food, you are welcome to bring it back and eat it here while we're meeting. We'll do a second public comment towards the end once you've heard the discussion that we've had, if you want to provide any more feedback. And then we'll do a wrap-up. And we're scheduled for the whole day, but we're hopeful that early afternoon, we can wrap this up and finish here. We will not have our priority work plan developed today. The goal of today is to get clarity from the council on projects and areas of focus for the next two years. We will then go back and build out that work plan, and we'll return to the council as part of our budget hearings in June and share that work plan based on everything we've heard. We often tweak it a little bit at that council meeting, and then it'll be approved for us to move forward in the next budget year, starting in July. So with that, I think we'll turn the time over to Ken for a brief fiscal update, and then we'll move to public comment. Ken?
All right. Good morning, Madam Mayor, Council, and members of the public. My name is Ken Stiles, finance manager with the city. Today, I'll be presenting the finance update and forecast for fiscal year 2023 through 2024. Next slide, please. Here is our agenda. Now, this presentation is a bit different than previous finance presentations because this one is a bit more forward-looking and prospective as we work through the budget process today and ongoing. I will give a quick recap of the current budget and a refresh council on those numbers. But from there, we'll be talking about our ongoing revenues, the forecast and outlook, and then finally, some strategies that are things to think about going forward. Starting with our current budget. As council knows, it was adopted in June of last year. It was morally conservative budget, though we did have some expenditure increase. Roughly half of that increase was rising costs in our existing obligations from inflation. And the other half was beefing up our economic development and community vitality program. We did have some unexpected items these past few months, namely the winter storms and the farm shootings. With the winter storms, damages are currently estimated at 1.6 million. This includes infrastructure, cost of running our ELC, debris removal, things like that. The silver of good news in that is that FEMA, it was declared as a federal emergency, so we can seek reimbursement with FEMA, which staff is in the current process doing. The farm shootings had a fiscal impact of about 40,000, and of course, that's for visual and community support. And then the last note, just a, it continues to remain true, but as a reminder, transient occupancy tax or hotel tax continues to be the biggest revenue stream at 40% of our budget. Of course, we had a mini-year review that council approved and adopted adjustments back a few weeks ago, April 4. Most of those adjustments were revenue-focused. We had very minimal expenditure adjustments. We did not add anything programmatic to this budget. It was mostly CIP needs, emergency project, and adjusting for special needs for some projects, existing projects. The very high-level result of that, oh, next slide. Can we go back? Oh, thank you. The very high-level result of the meeting is that the reserves for the end of this year is at 9.8 million, which is fully funded, 50% of our operating. And the projected unassigned funds on June 30 is 5 million. Unassigned funds are funds that we haven't given a purpose to yet. Now, the 5 million is a great number today, but unfortunately, a significant portion will be needed to balance out the following fiscal year. I have a slide coming up showing what I mean by that. So here on out, I'll be talking about next fiscal year, 2023, 2024. That starts on July 1st. And on the screen here, you see our ongoing revenues. This table is a little bit different than what councils used to. The difference is that it removes anything that is one-time in nature. So ARPA funds, specific grants that we only got in one particular year. It removes anything that is oddball payment. With the first line, TOT, last year, we received 9.2. This year, we budgeted at 9.6. This is about a 5% change. This category has seen tremendous growth over the past few years as we've been rebounding from the pandemic. But at this time, I don't think that we will see 5% year-over-year next year. We've really hit the, I think we've hit the watermark. We've hit our pre-pandemic levels. So 5% is a little bit, it was a little optimistic. We do have a consultant and a TOT provider. Right now, they're currently thinking that next year, we'll get somewhere between 2% and 3%. With property tax, we've increased by 1%, fairly stagnant. Sales and use taxes, 6% increase. This category is similar to TOT. It's rebounded tremendously. The economy got really hot. And as of right now, our sales tax consultant thinks that we may be flat next year. So right now, they're kind of building in, they're not saying a recession, but they're kind of building in that the economy is cooling down. So that's another category that I don't foresee us getting 6% next year. Average all out, our revenues have increased by 2.8%, which before the pandemic would be a good number to have. Historically, CPI or inflation before the pandemic was going around to 2.5%. So if you're getting 2.8 on your revenues, you're beating out inflation. That's not the case. Last year, inflation was around 8%. This year is around 4%. So as of right now, our revenues are not keeping up with inflation. As of right, as it currently stands, now this estimate won't change before June as we get more information, as we fine-tune what we think we're going to make next year. As of right now, we're estimating that revenues would be about 21.6 million. Next slide, please. Now, mentioning inflation is a definite challenge for the city. We have other challenges going into next fiscal year. Again, rising costs of existing services, what we currently have. Another one of note is our public safety costs. This is a major change in the past two weeks from the last outlook that I delivered to council in early April. We recently received an estimate of our public safety costs. They're, as of right now, is increasing by about 1.5 million, which is a considerable amount. Now, staff is still kind of working over and working out the details of that, and it may change, but it's quite a bit as it stands. We also have our ARPA funds expiring. We received 1.5 this year. We won't receive that next year. That is something that we will have to work around. And then finally, as I mentioned, our sales tax forecast. Right now, our consultant is thinking that it would be relatively flat. Six months ago, they thought maybe it'd be a little bit more. Now they're thinking it might be flat. So they've been downgrading the forecast for us, and that may or may not be a sign that revenues may flatten out next year. These are all structural challenges that will impact this year and possibly, in fact, impact multiple years going forward. Next slide, please. So here is the financial outlook. This is the same table I showed the council on April 4, but it's updated with the newest sales tax numbers and the public safety changes. It takes into account all of the challenges mentioned. Now, this, of course, is still very preliminary. It will change as we get closer to June, as we tighten up where we think we're going to land and what we think we're going to make. But as of right now, the unassigned fund balance a year from out, from here, so next June, June 2024, would be estimated about 500K. And then in the following year, if we don't react or if things don't go, if the trend continues, I should say, then we wouldn't have any unassigned funds in the following year. So this is just a, this is a forecast. It's a projection. It's not a plan. There are lots of steps in between now and, you know, June and six months from here and the next fiscal year and the next fiscal year after that. But this is a tool to spot any structural problems or issues that we may have. And it's to say that if trends continue and if the city doesn't react, then we may have to consider a way to not spend down our unassigned funds or not go into reserves. That's things that we generally would not want to do. But again, the city has lots of opportunities along the way to change the course. But we do have to be mindful. Looking into the future, with all this in mind, staff will be looking at short-term and long-term strategies for this year and for the next. Our first step internally is identifying things that can be improved or new streams of revenue. Of course, our number-one goal is to preserve existing services and have minimized impact as much as we can on the community. With that, holding all the things that we have to, all the issues or challenges that we have, the one thing, if council were to, I would employ, if there are any additions that council would consider, they'll consider with very carefully as they can have impacts into this year and then, of course, in the next year. And with that, I will take any questions.
I have a question. Can you explain a little bit about the increased costs of public safety? What that means, what they are, and why?
I'll take that question, Mayor. So, you know, the city has a responsibility to provide public safety services to the community. In our case, fire is handled through the Coastside Fire Protection District. But in emergency response, like EMS, that's all handled through the county and the fire protection district. Of course, we contract with the sheriff for law enforcement services. We contract with the county's Public Safety Communications Team for 911 services and a variety of other services, like animal control. I think all agencies right now are taking a step back and looking at cost recovery, making sure that they're covering their costs through the services they provide. And so the county has looked at all the services they provide, both to the unincorporated areas, but also on a contract basis to all the cities. And they found that over the last five years, they've really lost pace with actual costs, and they legally have to get themselves caught up. And so our costs of our sheriff's contract are expected to go up significantly, as will Public Safety Communications and other services from the county. And unfortunately, this is an area where we don't have a lot of options because bringing any of these services in-house, one, realistically, for us to provide these services ourselves, the quality and the scale that we get from the county would be really, really challenging. And from a cost perspective, I don't think we can compete with the costs. It's still the cheapest way to go. Unfortunately, we had not planned for these increases. They've just been rolled out to us over the last couple of weeks. All the cities are working with the county to see if we can find some middle ground here. But our goal today is not to paint a doomsday picture, but be conservative, paint a realistic picture of how things are changing so that, as Ken said, we can avoid reduction of services, reduction of capital projects. We want to at least maintain the level that we're doing right now for the community and then look for incremental increases as we find other sources of revenue. Does that answer your question?
It does. I guess it brings up other questions on how can we mitigate it? If the county's been irresponsible for five years. I don't know if that's the right word.
I don't think it is. I think actually it's worked to our favors, so.
Anyway, it might have been good for us in the past, but that doesn't mean that it was going to be good for us in the future. So I appreciate the fact that the cities across the board and the county are working together to try to get some mitigation on it. I think that's going to be critical moving forward.
And I'll mention, the county offered to work with the cities on a regional approach to mitigation. So it wasn't the county just dropping a bomb on us. They shared hard truth and then told us they would work with us. So that's what we're working on now, and we hope that we can mitigate some of this. But at this point, we have to plan for what we've seen, and hopefully, it gets better as we work over the next couple of months.
Thank you. Does the rest of council have questions or comments? Okay.
At this point, we can go to public comment, if that's okay, Madam Mayor. Just for the community to know, we are recording this meeting, even though it's not being livestreamed. It is being recorded by CCTV, and we'll have access to the recording in the future. We also have staff that'll be taking extensive notes to add to the record with all of our listening sessions and all the other information we've gathered. So with that, I think we're ready to take public comment. Oh, I guess, yeah. Yeah, we're not going to have the timer up here today, but we would again remind the community that this is a working session. Our normal two to three minutes is what we would hope you would keep your comments to. Okay, Jessica.
I will start with Colleen Henny. Hi there. I'm Colleen Henny. I prepared a statement here. We have some statistics from a downtown survey that we took. I'm one of the founders of the Half Moon Bay Downtown Association. This is Betsy from It's Italia, also one of the founders of the Half Moon Bay Downtown Association. I wanted to call attention to the challenges facing our downtown businesses today. Most of the small business owners I know don't like to talk about their struggles. It's not really great for business. So often, the general public doesn't know anything is wrong until they start seeing businesses closing their doors for good. So most of those of us who are running businesses downtown do talk amongst ourselves, and we were able to get two-thirds of our downtown retailers to complete a Does that work? Okay. So we were able to get about two-thirds of our downtown retailers to complete a survey about how their businesses are faring right now. I want to briefly share the results of that survey because they're very concerning. Over 90% of businesses say they have not still fully recovered from the pandemic. Only 14% of businesses feel like they're better off than last year. 82% of businesses reported a decline in revenue compared to last year, with 45% of businesses reporting year-over-year declines of 30% or more. We also asked how these businesses are dealing with these challenges. 47% of businesses have taken loans and other financial assistance, and 58% expect to need more assistance in the coming year. 47% expect they'll need to refinance their debt this year. 57% have cut employee hours already, and 41% plan to cut more hours in 2023. None of the businesses we surveyed plan to add staff this year. And most concerning, 23% of businesses say they may close permanently in 2023. There are a lot of reasons we're experiencing this. Obviously, the general state of the economy is a factor, and many people are reporting that the shop, small sentiment that lifted up so many local businesses after the lockdowns has faded considerably. The wet winter, nine atmospheric rivers, and the road closures that followed have been a huge drag on business. So we're seeing people take on more debt, reducing jobs and cutting costs wherever they can, just trying to survive. But cutting costs is just a means of survival to have a thriving downtown. We need more people coming downtown to shop and eat. What we need more than anything, and this is a sentiment that's been going on for years, is signage, specifically at the intersection of 92 and Main. Having planned the downtown, the Half Moon Bay Wine and Jazz Festival, the sheriffs tell us that on any given Saturday, 50,000 people come over 92 and land into downtown Half Moon Bay. So those cars pass through, you know, that 92 intersection, and the percentage that turns south on Main is a tiny, tiny percentage, mostly because they don't know there's any reason to turn there. Every Main Street business will tell you that it's a daily occurrence to have visitors tell us they've been coming to Half Moon Bay for years and are coming to downtown just by accident for the first time. They say, "This is lovely, beautiful downtown. I wish I knew this was here." And that's what downtown businesses need more than anything. We just need a fraction of those thousands of visitors to know that we're here. Plenty of people are already coming to Half Moon Bay every day. We just need more of them to turn left at that intersection and put money into our local economy rather than driving straight to the beach. Signage is a proven method of directing traffic and attention, but it's beyond the capacity of individual business owners or small nonprofits. We need our local government to make this a priority, or it's not going to happen, and our downtown businesses will continue to struggle.
And I just wanted to comment, as a business owner downtown, one of the things that we do is support the community. For instance, we donate to and contribute to all of the schools on the coast without fail. And then all of the charities on the coast. Any charitable organization or any school on the coast is our priority charity of choice to support. I've had to cut back a little bit on that, and that could result in less support to kids, kids in our community. I'm the president of the Boys and Girls Club here, and I see how incredibly important it is to support them. Our businesses can support them. So that's just a little side note for you to consider, that it's not just the business owners, the employees, and the people that work in the businesses, but it's also extended out to the community. Also, let's just think about raising the revenue. If we can get the TOT tax up, that's one of your biggest points of revenue here. And if we can get better advertising, better signage, better support to promote the downtown, we can get better revenue for the city. And you can do the things you want to do and be in a healthier outlook for the future for your budget. Okay? Try to end it on a positive note. All right. Thank you. That's all right.
Thank you. I think that's it.
Do you have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we have Matt O'Hara.
Sorry, excuse me. Colleen, I have a question. When are the, when are your meetings, the downtown association meetings?
We have a member recorder, and we just had a mixer recently.
Okay, thanks.
And staff meets with the leadership from the downtown association monthly and on an ongoing basis, on ad hoc basis. But we have a standing monthly meeting with them as well.
I have a question also, before you go. If you could generate some more specific, you know, I noticed a lot of folks talk about signage seems to be a very common suggestion. So if you can get a little more granular and detailed around what that might look like, using the brain trust of all your downtown business owners, that would help, you know? Because I'm assuming you've seen signage in other towns, you know, our size, that you felt, wow, this could really work nicely, you know? It's aesthetic, et cetera. So.
I think in the past, we've used the Burgundy Avenue model as a beautiful model for a modern, modern street with wider sidewalks. The two pillars on either side of the mall determine their map, which says, you know, welcome to historic Main Street. You do have the little handkerchief sign. It's not as old as I used to. We need to do right on that intersection that lets people know to make the left turn. And we are happy to work with the city in any capacity that we need. Personally, I know my daughter is an intern at Capuchin, who I live in the South of Maine, design, and we feel like they're amazing, the local agency, to make that happen. It needs to be right at 92. That's where people have the opportunity to go straight and turn left. So it would be big and something invisible. That will reward you in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Matt OJ. I'm just coming up on my 30th anniversary, living on the coast side here in Half Moon Bay. And as a result, I have had several chances to drive across 92 to the other side of the mountain, the hill. And I'm here to talk about the project called the Coast Skyway, the dream, let's say, of having, providing an alternative transportation, mass transportation route roughly along the line of Route 92 between here and actually San Mateo to link up with the north-south transit corridors on the peninsula to get better access in and out of Half Moon Bay and to solve the real problem, that is, too many cars on 92 both directions during the week, on the weekends, and too many cars in town up and down Highway 1, on the weekends especially. The demand for coming over here is fine for the downtown businesses and for all the city council, you know, income that relies on tourists, but, and that's good, and we want to encourage that, but if they could come over without any cars, it would be much preferable. The idea has been floating around. There's a lot of buzz on the coast side, if we could say, about the gondola project. It's called the Skyway. In the past couple of months, this, I think momentum is building. I submitted to all of you, and I hope you had a look at it or someone had a look at, a more elaborate pitch that lays out the multiple benefits of a project like this. It would be, of course, a multi-year construction project. There isn't going to be any enlarging or enwidening of 92. There isn't going to be any tunnels through the mountains. There aren't going to be any flying elevator cars or any other options to make 92 less congested. The idea of a gondola would be beneficial in all kinds of ways in getting more people here without their cars. Of course, there would have to be additional options set up at this end and that end, primarily a kind of a system of loop shuttles to get pedestrians around town without their cars, which there are all kinds of options for. Samtrans would have to be involved. Caltrans train could be involved. The city of San Mateo, the county, I don't know, all kinds of, it would be a rather major transportation initiative that would be so original and so innovative that it would get a lot of attention all over the state and all over the country. And I think it would bring a lot of interest to the idea. In the small picture, it would be very helpful to San, to Half Moon Bay in relieving some of the, you know, headaches that 92 has been giving us. I don't have to go into those. But in the big picture, this is absolutely the perfect time to look at an innovative, zero emissions, mass transit infrastructure project because of the age that we live in and the sort of fearsome emergency that climate change is posing to us more and more every year. It has everybody's focus, from the federal to the state, to the, you know, every other level, as an emergency that needs to be addressed finally. And there's quite a lot of initiative and quite a lot of, therefore, budget money to be had to help in the construction costs of such a project, which is another consideration for this. What I specifically would request from the city is very, very simple. Just simply say, produce a letter of support saying, "We like this idea. It's worth looking into. We would like to see an exploratory study that will identify as soon as possible whether there is any reason we can't do this, whether there are any actual sort of technical or administrative or, you know, permitting or any other kind of roadblocks that will shut this thing down. Discover those as soon as possible, deal breakers, as it were, and then we'll know that this isn't an option. If we don't find any of those, then the project can move on to other phases of a true feasibility studies and more engineering studies and more details and nuts and bolts about funding and the details of the design of the system." But the idea is to get started, and you can't get started without some input from the city, I think. And we're also going to other players in the whole ecosystem to also look for support in a most general way for this. So I don't think I need to say much more than that. Did I hear 50,000 cars on a Saturday coming across 92? Who was that? Was that, was that what I heard? Well, that's too many. We can't handle that. A very substantial percentage of that could be removed by having people take a gondola system over instead of getting in their own cars and sitting bumper-to-bumper in traffic and so forth. So that's pretty much all I need to present to you. Are there any questions? Of course, there are plenty of questions, but this may not be the place to go too deep into it. I assume that the document that I sent around is at hand somewhere here. It was about 10 days ago I sent it in. If not, I can, you know.
It's what you emailed.
Yeah, it was an email. Well, it's an attachment to the email.
Can I give you a card and you can send it to me?
Absolutely.
And then I'll make sure everybody sees it.
Yeah, there's some, we can send some other links. I did a couple of radio shows on KHMB talking about it, and there was, I did an editorial in the paper about a month ago. And so there's been some sort of buzz about it, to put it that way. So anyway, if the city supports this thing, it doesn't need to be a big deal, but it will give us a kind of, a little bit of momentum, additional momentum in looking into it.
Thank you.
So that's, okay. All right. Thank you.
Rod Spikes.
A little tall here. Good morning, City Council, Mayor, and Council. I wanted to talk to you guys about the alcohol and other drugs issue and preventative measures that we could take. I'm a part of the Youth Leadership Institute, which is why I lie. So just give me a moment to just read this to you all. My name is Rod, and I am San Mateo County Senior Program Coordinator at Youth Leadership Institute. This community would feel safer if there was less gang violence. This instance is one of many reflections I have read that come from our middle school program, Cunha Club Live. My initial thoughts bring me to conversations I've had with Cabrillo Unified School District, admins who are calling for more expanded learning opportunities that keep young people safe. The normalization and continuous exposure to economic instability increases the likelihood for Half Moon Bay young people to experiment with alcohol, tobacco, cannabis, and other drugs, all of which are significant public health concerns linked to a wide range of academic, social, and health problems. Alcohol is the most widely used substance amongst the nation's young people in its initiation peaks in the years between grades seven and 11. Drinking during adolescence increases the likelihood of alcohol dependence in adulthood. An adulthood and excessive alcohol consumption can have long-term health consequences, including liver disease, cancer, and heart disease. We are calling on Half Moon Bay City Council to increase fund, funding for after-school programs, dedicate more youth-centered, dedicate more youth centers for after-school programming, and develop comprehensive strategies that promote school and community alignment. Help youth development organizations like Youth Leadership Institute by advocating for us and connecting us to opportunities that help young people develop the knowledge, skills, and motivation to avoid substance use. We are closing our comment with another quote from our young people who wrote, "I believe that there should be more after-school programs so that kids can get distracted from bad things such as alcohol and other drugs." And then I would also like to take this opportunity to invite all of you all to our Hallmark event that is happening here in this room, May 25. It'll be 5:00 to 7:30 p.m., where we'll be doing a gallery walk, photo voice project that shows the different alcohol and other drug preventative projects that we are working on right now through Cunha Middle School and then Half Moon Bay High School. So we have two groups that are working on initiatives for social positive norms, which is basically just trying to break down the barriers, break down the negative connotation that all youth do alcohol, all youth do drugs. So what we'd like to do is take the actual national data and local data of Half Moon Bay and compare the differences and show that, like, though the national data may say 86 points such, of all youth between seventh and 11th grade may consume alcohol, we can show that less than 1% of youth in Half Moon Bay actually live that truth, which shows that youth are actually taking the opportunity to join projects like the Youth Leadership Institute to continue to create healthy alternatives than consuming alcohol and other drugs. So with your support, it'd be a great deal. And I did see a number up there, 500,000 for unassigned, right? We can start assigning some funds to provide more programming. I think that's also important when it comes to the after-school programs, because we have to think about where the youth are at, especially being on the coast side. Not all youth want to be, like, not all youth want to surf, not all youth want to bike trails. So we have to just make sure that we have all, many other initiatives, many other alternatives and healthy alternative programs that align with what youth need today, especially dealing with COVID and social anxiety. We need more mental health support, emotional health support, and showing youth how to truly choose healthier alternatives with the support of the community. And then, you know, it takes a village. And, you know, as individuals, we may know some, but together, we know a lot. And so I'll just end with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today on a couple of the priorities that I believe we need to concern ourselves with. And made a couple of notes here. My name's Walter Sensing. I'm a resident of Half Moon Bay. And I'd like to see us complete our storm, master storm plan for the city. Several years ago, six or seven years ago, the city put forth the master plan and left out, at the time, two significant storm drainages here in Half Moon Bay. One, the Keigho Ditch, and the other is the Pullman Roosevelt Drainage. They were excluded at that time with the expectation that they would be, the analysis to deal with those drainages would take longer, so they didn't want to hold up the master plan at that time. Well, it's been six or seven years. I think it's time that we reinstitute that effort and include these drainages in the plan. And as a, an additional thought in that area, the recent floods and storm damages that we've had, I think, are a precursor to what we can expect in the future for them to be even worse possibly, as we've been told. So the time to act on this is not after we have a disaster. I think the time to act is in preparation to avoid a disaster. And I think we all have now a bigger appreciation for just how sideways things can go when the rains come faster than we can, than our drainages are able to handle it. In addition to the storm drainages, I would also include the Pillar Citos Creek. I just recently walked here from my house and walked across the bridge that crosses Pillar Citos near the Burger King around Safeway, and it's a deplorable mess. It's been that way for the last three months at least, and the damage from the encampments that have been set up along Pillar Citos Creek have just essentially scattered themselves for about a mile from Highway 92 and Highway 1 all the way to where the Pillar Citos Creek runs into the Pacific Ocean. In addition to that, it became to my attention that during the December-January rains, Pillar Citos Creek flooded into the sand plant, a critical piece of infrastructure in the town and for the community, and threatened, appeared to me, the viability of the sand plant at that time. So these are all kind of, I think, precursors to what can happen, and if we don't do anything, we're probably going to suffer some significant impacts from future storms. And lastly, I'd like to, oh, I did forget the Seymour Ditch, which after these storms looks like it's sustained quite a bit of damage, and it had a temporary permit several years ago to work on it. That was never completed, and the final plans never, was never resolved, so we've got an ongoing problem there as well. And that brings me, lastly, to the coastal trail maintenance, and particularly that portion within Half Moon Bay. It looks to me like nothing's been done to mitigate the incising and the coastal bluffs coming towards the trail, and a couple of places have, in fact, come all the way up to the trail. I know there's a plan to bring it in further, but it seems like to me we can make what we have last a little longer. That's about all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Steve Riddick.
Thank you, Mayor Penrose, city council members, city staff. My name is Steve Riddick. I'm a longtime resident of Half Moon Bay. I'm a member of the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission, but I appear this morning with, as a private citizen, to make a comment about public safety and nothing to do with planning commission issues. What I wanted to draw attention to and argue for the city making, continuing to make this a very high priority, is the public safety issue around the old dump that is south of Poplar Beach parking lot and north of the Seymour Ditch. Less than a week ago, there was a major slump and landslide on the north bank of the Seymour Ditch, near the outflow. I have photos, and I've shared those photos with the city manager and Director Ikas, if people haven't seen them, but it's very impressive. A big, big chunk of the cliff has fallen off and many tons of soil underneath that. And this is exactly the kind of lateral erosion that we have been worried about in terms of the danger of exposing the content of that old landfill to Seymour Ditch and then the waves. I know that there is a, I know the county is, to some extent, working on this, and the city is participating. Matt told me that Maz met with the county as recently as yesterday, which is, which is great, but it's been a very long time to get the county to focus on this. I would hope that this erosion that is very evident there would, could possibly be an additional motivation to make the county take that seriously. It's, if you stand on the south side of the ditch and look at that landslide, it's pretty scary. And it's very scary to imagine the contents of that, that old dump being exposed to Seymour Ditch and being washed onto the beach and into the ocean. So I know the city has a lot going on. I applaud you all for taking the time to do this priority-setting mission. I know it's time-consuming, but it means a lot to the residents to have the opportunity to have this input and have the transparency around that. But as a public safety issue, I just urge, urge the city to keep that very high on the priority list and do whatever we can to make the county act responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you. Maz, could you address the last two speakers' questions quickly?
Sure.
The inclusion of the Keigho Ditch in the master storm plan, et cetera?
Sure. Absolutely. We have, we actually have a couple of things. We went through the process of hiring a geomorphologist to help us look at sediment loading and stormwater impacts to our coastline and our infrastructure. That is actually, they're coming next week to kick off their tour of the city, and we are in the process of updating our stormwater master plan, looking at our watersheds and trying to better, get a better understanding of how much water and where it's coming from so that we can start looking and updating that master plan. And as far as the Seymour Ditch and the landfill, absolutely, we've noticed that late last week, we've gone on site to take a closer look. We've talked to county public work staff. They are concerned as well, and so we're, they're going to continue looking at it, and I should hopefully have more information on that piece soon. I think all of us understand that if we do a clean removal, that's the prime location from a water quality standpoint. So hopefully, we can continue that partnership and look at some funding through CalRecycle or other means to do a clean removal of that.
Great. Thank you. And can you just address the one question about the inclusion of the Keigho and the Pullman Ditches in our master storm plan? Are they being considered?
We're going to look at every, we're going to look at all the watersheds within our city limits and a little bit beyond that. So yes, those would be included.
Thank you.
Paula Eisen.
Okay. Hi, everyone.
Okay, hi, everyone. And thanks for having this meeting. And I'm going to just jump in. All right, so first I want to thank Ken for what is a very sobering report on our city's finances. To me, it makes priority setting even more important than ever. How to generate more income, how to streamline expenditures, and deciding how to spend our money on what will benefit the whole community, not just special pockets. The council should be considering the financial health of the city before they vote on any expenditures. So safety, I think, should be one of our top priorities. There have been so many plans. I'm going to specifically address bike safety right now. Being a bike rider myself, trying to minimize my use of a car. We know that that's our, one of our biggest problems in Half Moon Bay is our congestion. I try to use my bicycle to go places. But with all, I've been on the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, the commission, the this, the that, and addressing this subject. And yet, very little in the years that I've been at this has actually anything been done. And that's a problem. I am still not safe riding on my bicycle, trying to access downtown, on the coastal trail. That's, that's, that's a mess. And even the new path that is being, that, you know, had that has recently been built and that is continuing to be built, it's too narrow. I walked on it the other day. I was walking with another person, and the, and then there was a bike coming. He had to go on the grass because there's just not enough room. It is not wide enough. So even something newly being constructed is not being done in a manner that is going to be helpful or safe. Let me just get back to my few notes here. So Carter Park is another, is another issue. Construction is still not up and running. The original plan was to have it completed at the end of 2023. The communication to the community at large about what is going on and why this isn't happening is like nonexistent. More homeless encampments that the city seems again to be allowing a lot of illegal camping. It's definitely affecting our Pillar Citos Creek. Walter mentioned this about, we just passed, we, walking here. We just went over the bridge and watching all this debris just flowing freely into the ocean. Finally, I want to address the communication to the public. I don't, I used to get weekly updates, but I hardly see anything anymore, like regular, every Thursday. I don't know what happened to that program. Most of the time, I'm looking for what's going on either through Coastside Buzz, which is not from the city, or Next Door, which is not from the city. So again, what is going on with the communication from the city to the general public? To even let us know what issues may be coming up to be discussed at city councils so that we might actually tune in because something important to us. So the outreach, and even by the city council members here themselves, it's like, where's the outreach to find out what is going on? And especially the silent majority, which is the largest part of the population, the maybe 100 total people that come out to talk at city council meetings or whatever. That is not representative of what is actually going on in the thousands of other people in the community. And where is the outreach to try to find that out? We used to have coffee clutches, this, that. There's, you know, now we have Zoom. Zoom could be, could be a useful tool for a city council member, perhaps to address their constituents, have a time every month to find out what people are thinking, what's going on. So communication, I just feel, I personally feel there's been like, it's worse than ever. So that's, you know, I tell it like it is. That's, that's me. But thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Paulette. Ian Mori.
Good morning. I'm Ian Mori. Thank you for having this event and allowing us to speak. I'm here to talk about the recreational opportunities that the Half Moon Bay City offers to its residents. Recreation is important. It's part of the quality of life, which we all want the best quality of life. I'm sure the city wants to provide its residents with the best quality of life. Recreational opportunities are important for physical fitness and mental health. And I think after the last several years, famous athletes are talking about their mental health, the shootings, mental health. Mental health has to be at the top of our priorities and our own mental health and everyone's mental health. So the second item I'd like to speak about is a new swimming pool for the city of Half Moon Bay. I've been working on this for about six months now. I've talked to over thirty people. The pool that's in existence at Half Moon Bay High School doesn't meet the needs of the community. The high school athletes, they have a competitive swimming team for boys and girls, and they have a water polo team for boys and girls. All those athletes plus coaches are a hundred and some people, a hundred and some people. And if you've gone up to that pool recently, it's sad. The tiles are chipped. The competitive swim team has to start their races in the water because the pool's not deep enough so they can start off, start from starting blocks. And the competitive swimming teams are first place in their league, in the Bay League. So here are all these young people, enjoy swimming, probably have been swimming for a long time, now want to compete with the other high schools and even at the state level by representing Half Moon Bay High School, and they don't have a decent swimming pool. So that, that's shameful. The second teams that can't compete and can't even practice is the water polo team. The water polo field, whatever they call it, the pool's not big enough. And then the second thing, the pool has to be seven feet for water polo. You can't stand on the bottom of the pool and play water polo. The pool at Half Moon Bay High School starts at three and a half feet, goes to four feet, and then finally goes to seven, but it can't hold water polo matches. So I just think this is an insult to the young athletes of the community and the coaches, all giving it their best, and they don't have a decent pool. So after listening to the budget, I know money is short, but I hope, I hope you'll consider supporting a new high school pool. And I, and I think the high school super, or the school superintendent is on board with this. So it's my sincere wish that the city of Half Moon Bay and the school district and the private citizens all get together, work well together, and can come up with a plan for a new pool. Where the process is now, the listening session that was held in March was wonderful. There were over fifty people that came and spoke about the pool. And like was mentioned, there's hundreds at home, sitting at home, that also want a new pool. And we're talking also about the young people that come through, that live here in Half Moon Bay, come through the school district, and they've never had a swimming lesson. And that's shameful. Swimming is a lifetime activity. It's a life-saving activity. Seventy percent of the world is water. All the kids that are leaving Half Moon Bay or staying and have never had a swimming lesson, that's scary. So several people have talked about the youth. I think we owe it to the young people, especially the young people, the school kids, to have a swimming, decent swimming pool for competitive purposes and lessons and for community enjoyment. And it just has to happen in the near future, sooner than later. So that's my pitch, recreational opportunities as the big picture, and then the swimming pool. And where we are with the swimming pool, several companies want to build us a swimming pool. The price tag is about 10 million, which sounds like a lot, but it is a lot. It's, it's doable. And right now, where the project is, is the feasibility study. People have to go up there and think where they want to put the pool. Is it worth saving the, the pool that's there? And the feasibility study costs about seven, $70,000. And right now, the project is looking for $70,000. So I know the city has a lot to do with their money. Hopefully, they can contribute. Hopefully, the school district can contribute. And hopefully, people in the community contribute. So what I want to leave you with is more recreational opportunities, parks, recreation for the citizens, and in the near future, a new swimming pool. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ian. It's time for a five-minute break. Can we all be back here no later than ten fifteen? That's a seven-minute break, so. Chad Hooker. Ayesha Barrow.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you. It's been a while since I haven't attended a city council meeting, but I just wanted to say a few words. First off, to acknowledge like all that you have gone through as a city during the first half of this year. And I feel like you have done a great job handling it, the mass shootings, the storm, the infrastructure issues. And I also wanted to thank you specifically as a, as a citizen. I feel like we've seen a lot more children-centered activities as of recent. In this very room right here, very recently, my daughter attended a cooking camp. And this is a, this is an example of a recreational activity that I wanted to advocate for. I heard somebody from the Youth Leadership Institute come over and talk about the importance of prevention of addiction for youth and the importance of activities. So I wanted to continue to emphasize that, not only for the youngest, as you have done, but also for some of those teenagers. Partnerships, maybe the Boys and Girls Club of Half Moon Bay, the Coastside Children Program and others that can provide youth recreational activities would be very much welcome and also help in terms of public safety. So I wanted to put a plus one for that. I like the idea of the swimming as well. I understand it's a really heavy budget item, so I don't know how possible that is. But I think in principle, I think it's a great idea. So I just wanted to put a plug for that. I know I'm part of a group, Coastside Family Seeking Action, not representing them today. We haven't engaged as much at the city level, but we just wanted to come in and thank you and express our commitment going forward to be more present at the city council meetings. I think you've done a great job, Matthew, in this first year, you know, with all the challenges. But we want to be there for you in terms of getting more engagement for a very group of stakeholders so that you can lean on us. So thank you, Ian, for all you've done.
Thank you, Ayesha. Chad Hooker.
Morning. I would like to reiterate a comment that was made here about communication. Last night, I was upbraided for coming to a meeting and speaking in the public forum content of it about an item that had been on a prior agenda. I had seen that it was on a prior agenda. I had, as I made in my remarks last night, already read the staff report and the BPAC committee report and decided that this is probably not going to go the way that it disappointingly went. But I couldn't just stand down then and let it become a prohibition. So I showed up when I showed up because I could. I run the Dream Machines event, and I had a meeting that night. I'm also on the Architectural Advisory Committee and the Board of Directors of the Coastside Delta Health Center. I spend enough time looking at my computer to have taken away a significant piece of my retirement, as you can all appreciate. So this idea that was floated about how there used to be a city, I guess it was an email that went out to interested residents who had signed up notifying us of what's coming up with the city would be really, really helpful. The most interesting thing I found in the budget report was this statement that the number one goal of the city is to pervert, preserve existing services. In this regard, I agree that kids and their support systems need to be very high on your list. I would encourage you to complete existing projects, like the drainage installations that were talked about, like the bike trail that ends 1,700 feet of the county trail, like this here-standing crisis of 10 years ago that the Main Street Bridge was going to collapse in an hour and a half. And everybody argued about it for a while, and suddenly it isn't a problem anymore. It's just sitting there until the flood came. And then it backed up all the water. So complete the things that you've already committed to. Secondly, maintain the installations. You've got trails that need to be made wider. You've got the split rail fence, four miles of split rail fence that's rotting and falling down. The north trail, as I mentioned, the completion of the east side trail to the north needs to be completed. And then take care of these things. A lot of money was spent moving the bridge down on the Poplar Trail some years ago, but that, that erosion problem there continues to exist. Rather than hire a quarter of a million dollar consultant to tell you how to deal that, look at how Caltrans does it. They don't move their roads every time a ditch is eroding. They've got infrastructure pieces in place. Pick up that engineering design, submit it to the Coastal Commission, wait for years, get approval, and carry on from there. I think that projects should not be added if existing projects are not complete or are failing. Significantly, an example of that is the Carter Park proposition. I live on a royally owned creek. A royally owned, in my backyard, came up 14 vertical feet during that storm. A patio in my yard that sits way, way above that creek was underwater. I walked down to the Main Street Bridge, and it was backed up almost to the top of the arch, three to four feet down from the top of the arch. The Pasta Moon basement was flooded. Fattoria basement was flooded during that storm. No clearing or maintenance has been done on any of that creek. And so I walked over to the Carter Park, looked through the construction fence that's there, and the steps that are built go down, and the water was well up onto the steps. Had you spent your huge amount of money on the stage, it would have been swept away. The creek water that was moving through there was not slow. It was 12 or 14. It was 12 or 14 knots. I have a steel truck wheel, about 18 inches in diameter, in my backyard that came down that creek, eight feet above the bottom of the creek. I don't know what kind of current it takes to carry a thing like that, but that's what's going on. So cancel Carter Park, negotiate with the contractor to go, be the guy who gets to pave and widen the coastal trail or build new fences or something like that. Don't spend money on Carter Park. It's a place that's cold and unused and would need constant, constant maintenance, then repair or replacement when the flood comes through and blows the stage away. You've got an awful lot of money going into that, and I think it's a bad priority. Filicidos drainage. Okay, also, TOT was brought up. Increasing TOT is an excellent objective for both the downtown merchants and for the city's revenue. And a very good way to do that would be to make the coast side as a bicycle hub. Think about this for a moment. You cannot get on a bike in Pacifica and ride to Santa Cruz. You can get on a bike in Pacifica and with very broken trails and crossing the highway here and there and knowing exactly where to go and where not to go, you can get down almost to the radio antenna patch by, I guess it's south, it's north of Tunedus. And then you're on a narrow road, narrow shoulder. There's an outfit in upstate Vermont and New Hampshire called Kingdom Trails. All the old farms out there are overgrown with small maple trees and so on. They're not used as farms much anymore. Kingdom Trails got their lawyers, got a contract that they can sign with farmers, private landowners, saying, "You will not be held liable if something happens on a bike trail on your property. This is Kingdom Trails." People sign up for Kingdom Trails for 30 bucks or 100 bucks a year or something. It's not any real money. And there are trails all over Vermont in a town where there were no people in the summer. Now, all the bed and breakfasts are jammed, the restaurants are going, there are bike shops all over the place. People come up all the way from Boston to ride on Kingdom Trails, and there are hundreds of miles of trails. Why do we have private land east of Highway One that is all protected, whatever that means, from development? Yes, but what else? Protected for what? Nobody can use it. Any farmer can say, "Private property, you're not allowed to cross here." Why don't we make a deal with these guys? Make it so that you can come down off the mountain and ride all the way down east side, you know, up in the foothills? Or fix the coastal trail, make it 16 feet wide, put up a good fence, demising line down the middle, e-bikes allowed. I think I made my point on that one last night. I'm very curious if a budget line item could be put together for how much money this city spends each year on consultants. Each time I come to a city council meeting, review the agenda, I see this consent calendar that's somewhere lost in it. There's $200,000 or $300,000 in a contract to a consultant to figure something out. You said, you made a very interesting comment. You said, I think, I think you said, "Our sales tax consultant advised us as follows." I had no idea there's any such thing as a sales tax consultant, but I'll bet this is another expense that the city pays. You've got a huge city staff, and a lot of these people are very qualified. And the amount of time that it takes the city engineer to put together a request for proposal, recognize what these requests, these proposals are that come in, sort them out, make a contract, the city engineer could probably just figure out himself exactly what ought to happen on some of these things. So I would, I'd be very interested in knowing what kind of money we're spending on consultants, and if you can't save a few million dollars a year on some of that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Chad.
Kristalyn Geet.
Thank you very much, Kristalyn, from the Coastside Chamber of Commerce. I would just like to note that in regards to the comments about TOT, I want to specify that the two comments seem to be related to getting more butts in beds and not raising the TOT rate. I would like to remind everybody that we have one of the highest TOT rates in the state, if not the nation, and that our county hotels are still at a much lower rate. So if Half Moon Bay raises the TOT rate any higher than 15%, you will just be pushing our visitors to the county rooms that are much lower. But fully agree that we need more butts in beds. Currently, the hotels are getting closer to pre-pandemic levels. Pre-pandemic, we had an average of 68% room occupancy throughout the course of the year, and we project this year that we're going to be kind of inching closer to the 59%, 60% mark. So we're getting closer. 2020, we were at 37% for comparison. So we're inching. The Visit Half Moon Bay is going through, it just approved, a beautiful redesign, rebranding. So we are going to work very hard to get more butts in beds. And then also, pre-pandemic, we had a person designated to trying to bring in middle-of-the-week. So our weekends are packed. Everybody knows that. We don't really need more weekend people. We need Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday people. So we have just gotten to the point where we can bring that person back as well. So we don't know what that'll translate in this first year for the city, but we are making those positive moves. I would also like to note that the chamber is doing a storm damage survey, and this is for both homes and businesses. We need, in order for the city and the county to apply for different funding sources to get things taken care of in the aftermath of these storms and other natural disasters, we have to be able to report out during the funding process about like, what does that look like on the coast side? And to date, there's not really been great stats. So the chamber is working with the city and the county to gather stats, and last week, we only had 14 responses to our survey, and it already amounted to $2.6 million in damage. And so as we continue to get those stats, and we hope to close the survey on April 30th, but if you could spread the link around, it's on our website, coastside365.com, and I have little flyers. We just really need those stats because that will help us get revenue. And then I wanted to thank the council and the wonderful work of Karen and the whole Coastside Recovery Initiative team. Council in 2020, 2021 really prioritized economic development through the Coastside Recovery Initiative, and we are just at the beginning of seeing the fruits of that labor. Karen was able to report out last night that we're already at about $6 million into the city that we probably wouldn't have seen otherwise. So thank you very much for allowing us to work on that, and thank you very much for prioritizing the downtown streetscapes, because to Colleen and the Downtown Association's point, we do need some upgrades because it is starting to look dilapidated, and unfortunately, the business owners are not in a position to maintain the buildings on behalf of the business, the building owners. And some of those building owners are a little bit absent and not doing a good job. And that really does reflect. And if we have people coming down and they see a dilapidated, dirty downtown, then they're not going to feel like this is a place where I want to eat or hang out, and then they just skip it and go to the beach. Thank you very much for the new garbage cans. They are beautiful, and I think they're really starting to help in that effort. And we have designed a idea for a downtown monument sign already, and we have been starting down the road of looking about how to make that possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristalyn.
And then we had a Suman Kalan who wanted to register her support for consideration of gondola aerial tramway, some type of alternative transportation, but did not wish to speak. And I have no other speaker cards, mayor.
Thank you. Okay, next steps.
Okay, I apologize for that. Thank you, Joe. Crisis averted. And thank you to the public for all of your comments. I did want Jessica, we've heard a couple of comments about some of our communications. I did want Jessica to just make a quick statement about that.
Yes, we do send out our weekly e-news each week, usually on Thursdays. If anyone is having issues receiving those, please reach out to me, and we can help you get that sorted out.
And then I would encourage everybody to sign up for our other email lists and our social media. We're on various points of social media and posting pretty much daily on those areas. So if, if you're struggling with communication from the city, please start by reaching out to our communications team, and they can help you get connected to those very frequent updates. So thank you. Okay, well, we've already taken a break, so I think we're ready to get down to business, working with the council on looking at our upcoming priorities and talking about any other things we need to identify for the coming year. So Jill Ikas and Viveka Sahai are across from me here. They've been taking notes from the public. They're now going to switch over for the community. You can see up on the screen when it comes on. Council, you should see on your tabletops. We just have a simple tool that shows our current priorities. Just as a reminder, when we went through this process last year, and this is something we've done for the last couple of years, we build out a two-year work plan, and that gives us some flexibility to adjust to changes in the community and the environment, different things that come during the year that we weren't expecting, and keep the work moving forward. And so what we have before you, I know it's really small and hard to see, but Jill will zoom in and zoom out as we go, are our five priorities from the last fiscal year. Is it showing up on your screen? Oh, is Brian around? Okay, while, while I'm talking, we'll get the screens back up and running. But we list our five priority areas. As a reminder, they are affordable housing, public health, safety, and emergency preparation, community and climate resilience and sustainability, economic recovery and development, and transportation, circulation, and mobility. And those are the overarching priority areas. Underneath those areas, the work plan identifies dozens of different projects that staff are engaged in to lead towards those, those higher-level outcomes. I'll also remind you that these priorities are somewhat interwoven into our daily work, but they're not everything. Of course, staff has a lot of other responsibilities to the public and to the community that are not necessarily directly associated with these priorities. What you see on the screen is the items in our two-year work plan that we're going to continue working on in the fiscal year ahead of us. Those that are in red represent some really big lifts. They take a lot of staff resources, time, energy, and often funding. Those that are in purple represent items that require some attention from staff but don't represent the, the big lifts remaining in this coming fiscal year. What this represents is a little over half of last year's work plan. When we look at last year's work plan, about a third of the items that were identified last year have been completed or have moved into kind of maintenance mode. You know, we don't have to dedicate a lot of time and energy. We just, there's a, a level of maintenance required to keep those things moving forward. About a third of those items are kind of in the middle. They'll be wrapping up early next year. They're going to require some concerted effort, but they should be wrapping up in the coming fiscal year. And, and then about a third are major projects that we still need to start and move forward, either because that's when they were programmed in or because of the changes in, in the things that are going on in our community had to be delayed or pushed back on the timeline. The other area that I'll identify in that column next to them, if there's a black box next to it, that's something that we don't have discretion over. We've either been mandated to do it, there's a legal requirement to do it, there's already funding that's dedicated to it, usually through grants, and those items are pushing forward. So we're not really going to dig into those too much today. If they're in gray, they're on the work plan, but there's discretion. We can change directions. We can make some different decisions about them depending on what other things we want to prioritize in the coming fiscal year. What we talk about today, we'll be looking at again over the next two years. Staff will be building out that work plan, as I mentioned, and bringing it back on June, at the beginning of June with the budget hearings. And our goal today is to have a list of, of projects, high-level projects and work areas that we want to focus on. And then we want to just look at the categories that we've assigned these priorities to and make sure they're still appropriate in the way we want to define the work that we do. I just want to point out on specifically some of the items that are in red, the major projects that remain ahead of us, just so you get a sense of the kind of workload that some of these bring. So under affordable housing, you see the housing element and land use plan implementation and zoning work. As, as we heard last night, our housing element was, draft was published on Monday and is out for public and community review and will be submitted to HCD, the State Housing and Community Development Department, by the end of May. That is a big lift, but it, it starts the clock ticking. There will be some back and forth, and we hope to get that completed. Once that's certified and approved, then there's work to do to now implement that kind of a policy in the community. That's a major lift for our community development department and for our housing staff. And so that is going to be a big focus for them in the coming fiscal year, and it's a legal mandate. It has to happen. And so we just have to be thoughtful of that as we look at other items that might fall on that department and that staff's workload this coming fiscal year. Another example would be under economic recovery and development, the recovery initiative implementation projects. Sounds simple. That includes what we heard today, the, the streetstapes master plan. We are starting a process to look at Main Street as, as a community gathering place, as a transportation corridor, as a place for economic and community development. That's a major, and there's, that's a major initiative that takes extensive community outreach, lots of work with business owners, with residents, with visitors, with the chamber and the Downtown Association. That is a significant lift for Karen Decker and her team in the coming year. Alongside that, we are going to be opening the Opportunity Center of the Coastside this year. It's a project funded by the county and in collaboration with the county and with the chamber to create opportunities for small businesses and entrepreneurs to get resources for our workforce, to gain training and access to higher-paying jobs and new career ladders. Again, a very significant lift for a very small team. So again, these are just examples, and that's why we put them in red, is if it's in red, that's the kind of staff time and, and energy that goes into that this year. And so we want to be thoughtful about that. We also recognize that a lot has changed since last March. A ton has changed in our community since last March, and we need to be thoughtful about how we look at our work and the things that we're doing and address the new needs that have been identified and the, the issues that have risen higher on our radar than they were a year ago. So with that, our plan, and of course, the mayor, this is your discretion how you want to run this, but our thought is to let each council member spend a few minutes talking about the existing priorities and then sharing some of the ideas that they've had or thoughts that they've had about other things we need to address. We can work through the entire council, and then we can start talking about what gets added to the list and how they get prioritized. You'll see there's a column called Other. Jill, thank you. These are items that have come up over the last year that we see as potential new priority items that need to be discussed, that don't necessarily fit within the current categories. And then there are certain items already on the list that don't have a colored box next to them. Those are items that staff has identified as things that have come up and need to be added to the work plan, and, and some of them may have some discretion, but a lot of them are things that we have to do. So I know that's a lot to throw at you. We could kind of work through this. As you know, this process changes every year, but we're hoping to get it honed in in a way that makes it easy for you all to talk about what's important to you based on what you've heard from the community and the work that you do every day in our community, and then together find the right list of projects and, and priorities for staff to then look at for the coming fiscal year. Any questions on any of that?
No, that, that sounds like a great approach. Anybody on council have a question?
Yeah, where is this chart?
Oh, is it not?
Oh, it's, but it doesn't exist in any hard copy that we can see. Is that right?
It's going to be live. We're going to be adding to it as we go. So no, you don't have it in front of you on paper, so I apologize for that. Yeah, that is a digital file that we're going to add to. We can provide it to you after the meeting, absolutely. Yeah. We can, we can post it to our website. Yeah, that would be easy to do. Yeah, that would be easy to do.
Put it back up on the screen here. I don't see it.
What's, is there anything showing on that screen?
Just us.
Okay, so if PCTV can switch to, oh, it froze. Thank you. It's important for you to be able to see it as we're going through this because it's going to be a live thing that we're working on, so.
Thank you, yes. We're going to start with Councilmember Harvey Rhabach.
Thank you, Mayor. I've made some notes. These are mostly additions to what's on the existing work plan. I understand that that's ambitious, and I also understand about financial constraints, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't undertake some new initiatives. So the first item that I think is really, really important is under affordable housing. It's something we've talked about before, and that's rent stabilization. Anybody who's been to any of the city council meetings constantly hears, and rightfully so, how difficult it is for essential workers to rent in Half Moon Bay. We talked about this when we were talking about tenant protections, but I think we need to go beyond what we've done up to now, and that is emulate, say, East Palo Alto, which has a rent stabilization program. That alone, I think, can make an enormous contribution to being able to stay in, for essential workers to stay in Half Moon Bay, or at least on the coast side. So that's one item that's not on the work plan. I don't think it is terribly burdensome to work on that ordinance, but I believe it will make a real difference to our essential worker population. Skipping over to the economic recovery and development column, the third item, at least on the way I'm looking at it, is the annexation exploration. Yeah, that's, last year, we talked about this, and we agreed that we would put this off because it would interfere with staff time developing the, at that time, idea of a additional tax on unoccupied houses. So I was okay with that at the time. I thought that the attempt to get more revenue from unoccupied houses was worth the staff time. But I think it's time to go back and explore, probably with LAFCO's help, the annexation of Moon Ridge, Miramar, the farms on Highway 92. And as long as we're working with LAFCO, I think we should include trying to get a healthcare district to get tax money for a very, very important needed healthcare on the coast side. So that's working with LAFCO about a healthcare district, annexing Moon Ridge, Miramar. Those are all, I think, goals worth exploring if we really want to be an inclusive city on the coast side. Then in that same column, digital infrastructure. We just heard yesterday from Greg Dieges about a plan to have community fiber. This is something that I was exploring like five years ago, and now it seems that it's coming, more and more companies are interested in helping out. Anybody who's dealt with the recent digital infrastructure issues realizes that it's very important. Probably this is a long-term project. The middle mile that the state and the feds are advocating might be part of the solution. But I think we definitely should explore the digital infrastructure, in particular community fiber, as a way to make the coast side more resilient and less dependent on infrastructure that often doesn't work. And if I can add one more item to the last column on transportation, you've heard about the coast side skyway. This is something that will, I hope, make Half Moon Bay unique in the area. It will add important tourist accessibility. It will take cars off of Highway 92. So I think we should explore a feasibility study. There are companies that can, are interested in providing the information so we could put an RFP out for a feasibility study for the coast side skyway so that we can have non-car infrastructure, get rid of some of the traffic on 92, and also make the coast side a tourist attraction. I'm hopeful that we could do it in such a way that's not only revenue neutral, but actually will provide income. We could have, for example, a wedding chapel on, near Highway 35. That would be a stop on the skyway. It would bring in tourist money. I think people would really like the idea of having a place to hang out in a gondola and a beautiful trip over the mountain there. And I understand that this might initially be expensive, but in the long run, I think it has the potential for actually bringing money into the coast side. So these are just a few of the items that I thought we could add to the list, and I'm perfectly happy to talk to anybody about any ideas that they have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rhabach. Vice Mayor Joaquin Jimenez.
We're going to be here a while for a while, so. One of the things is, when it comes about working with the community, I'm very, very ambitious, you know. We know that everything and anything is possible here in our community, and we have, I mean, we've had that shown not too long ago, something that we didn't think was going to happen in our community, and it happened. You know, the death of our seven farm workers. So with that, you know, we know that everything is possible. On that, when it comes to housing, you know, we, there was a view some brews a couple months ago. We talked about, there was a question about how much housing do we actually need in our community? You know, to tell you, you know, we need about a thousand new units to be the least. That's what we need, and it is possible. We often talk about, you know, the, our mental health, most recent. Housing, you know, affects our mental health. We, today we're heard about our community, about our youth, and that to me, you know, it's always been, my best investment are my children, everything. That's no doubt. So we had to think about, you know, our children, our new generations, their mental health. What do we have to offer for them? What do we have for them? Housing is a main thing, first thing. Yesterday, we had a meeting, and there were several children here. They cannot stay home. They don't have a place to be home without their parents. They were doing their homework. That's not what they were doing. They were doing their homework. They were coloring. They were, you know, that. So it's something, you know, that I want to say, you know, thank you to our city staff. I know Jill and her team have been working around the clock, you know, when it comes to housing. This is going to be a while, you know, that all these projects take time. We're looking for solutions, you know, and Harvey mentioned, you know, rent control. That's the other thing. 2018, you know, we brought up, you know, we brought it to city council about rent control, and the best thing that we came up with, you know, it was a tenant protection plan, you know, a year of contract. You know, but we need something more, actually a little bit stronger than that. What the city and the county are doing for community when it comes to housing, you know, and, I mean, we have a lot of allies. We have our assembly members, our senator, county supervisor, who are very interested, you know, in working with us when it comes to housing. So let's look into that. What can we do right now? Rent control. What are we able to afford, you know, to have the funding to build, you know, the housing that we need for our community? I can be, I can talk about housing all day, but let's move on. Or public safety. It was first brought up, you know, remember, 2019. You know, it was a big deal, you know, coming to our meetings and talking about, you know, public health, you know, safety and emergency preparedness. Towards the end of the year, in October, Bay City, you know, closed their doors, and we had close to 250 people unemployed. And I stood here and I said, well, this is a test. We really think about, you know, our safety or emergency preparedness, you know, we are being tested. What are we going to do? Not too far from that, we got hit with the pandemic, 2020. So every year, we've been, we are getting tested. So how are we actually preparing for these emergencies? And when it comes to, you know, we be affected, it's our mental health. So it is a big priority for me to, you know, to talk about mental health, especially for our children, you know, in our schools. We heard from Y-Lite today about drugs and other, and alcohol and other drugs, how it's affecting our community. By the Boys and Girls Club, you know, how, what are they doing, activities for our children? What do we have? So like I say, you know, I'm very, when it comes to providing for our community, I'm very ambitious, very ambitious, but I know we can do it. Activities for our children, you know, we are, when I brought up about, you know, rethinking, you know, these hall activities or recreational activities. So let's think on that. Let's go into the next one, our community and climate resilience, you know, and sustainability. To me, you know, smart development is a must, right? How can we actually create, and we're getting there, I think we're going away to actually creating a sustainable community? Without the infrastructure that is, you know, we are looking into, your budget, what are we, what do we have to offer to our, you know, to our community and to our visitors? To me, you know, creating a sustainable community is very important. So let's think in some solutions of how we, you know, dealing with, you know, our floods, you know, during, December 31st, I was out there early, and I received calls, people were being flooded. You know, got to see firsthand, you know, how high the creek was. Got to see the homes in Moon Ridge when they were flooded. Got to see the homes on Oak Avenue. Got to see the creek, the bridge, you know, that goes across from Pilar Citos all the way to 92, Breaking. Main Street, I got to see it firsthand. I got to see how high the, you know, creek was running, you know, under the Main Street So I had to rethink, you know, about Carter Park. It is a question. So we have to definitely do something. You know, when it comes to the water runoff, you know, what else can we do with the water? What else can we do? I mean, I've looked into, you know, I'm a lot, I'm very interested in what farming and is happening around the world. If you look into other communities in India, they're actually making use, they're collecting the rainwater for farming. They are creating new, I guess, a new infrastructure from the rainwater. I know it's different, you know, it's a different policy, you know, here in the United States, you know, and other countries, but we can actually use that, you know, to find solutions. Water runs to the ocean, the erosion is happening. I walk the trail pretty much, you know, three or four times a week, so I get to see the erosion on the, you know, the beach. Let's find a solution. One of my favorite topics that comes around, and Karen and Erica, you know, economic recovery development. It's, this is how we're going to get, you know, work with the budget. When I walk downtown, I think about what can we do to make people stop by downtown Half Moon Bay? We're imagining Main Street. Sinage. Why not do a beautiful arch on 92 before Main Street and that says, "Welcome to Half Moon Bay," or historic Main Street, and direct the people to take Main Street, you know, Opportunities are happening. When we talk about a new business, a new business also brings employment, brings new ideas, but we have to have that opportunity offered to our community. We have to be very basic, very simple about how a person in our community can be sustainable by creating a new business, new entrepreneurs in our community. Now, we are, we had a sit-down meeting, I believe it was 2020, when we sat down, Karen, Erica, and somebody else, who was, it was four of us, and we sat and talked about this because I'm very interested, because there's a lot of opportunity. Half Moon Bay, we as a community, we have a lot to offer. We in Half Moon Bay, in the coast, we have something that not too many cities in the Samaritima County have. We have farms. We have farming. We just have to be able to recreate that. You know, that is our heritage, you know, the farming is our heritage, you know, the fishing, the ranching. We have our restaurants. I try to visit every restaurant in the coast. I try to visit every restaurant in the coast and try their food. Many of them who are interested in purchasing, you know, their vegetables from our community. Giving opportunity to our contractors, to people actually have a business, a contracting business, electricians, plumbers, carpenters. To be able to do that in our community. So that's why, you know, the, uh, economic recovery is very, uh, important to me. But it's about, it's about the opportunity that we can offer. And, uh, farming, we have it. Let's not let, let's not let go of that. Uh, it's a big opportunity. What's that next one? Transportation. For a few years, I've been, uh, you know, talking about rerouting some of the traffic, you know, especially on the weekends. Now, I had the opportunity to meet with a gentleman that retired from PG&E. And I asked him about eighty-four. Highway eighty-four. Rerouting some of the traffic. But people have to understand, you know, and actually will benefit, San Gregorio will benefit La Honda. It will benefit, you know, other, uh, restaurants up on Skyline Thirty-five and, uh, and eighty-four, Woodside. So more basic, you know, uh, ways of, uh, rerouting traffic. Instead of, uh, working on, we have existing exits of Hafen Bay. Again, promoting use of bicycles, uh, walking our community. That's why creating a sustainable community when it comes to a smart development, you know, built local downtown. Where our residents can actually walk to the store, can walk to school. And walk pretty much anywhere. And not much need of our vehicle to move around. So that's, you know, like I say, you know, I like to walk at least four, maybe five times a week. Ride my bicycle right now, the beautiful weather, the same thing. I have timed myself riding my bicycle from, uh, Kelly Avenue all the way to Harbor. You know, depends how fast I wanna ride, but if it's on Highway one, I can do it in fifteen minutes. And now if it's on the coast, on the coastal trail, I can do it twenty-five minutes. And that's not with any assistance of, uh, anything else. Just full manpower. So let's think about that. You know, this re, uh, rethink our community to be sustainable. And B, you know, building equity for our community, opportunity. What do we have next? Others, that is, you know, that's the other one, you know, um, the Ted Archer Community Center, you know, make it a cultural center. We really wanna be inclusive, we have to be inclusive of everybody. There's not only one culture in Hafen Bay, and every culture in Hafen Bay has something to offer. Everybody. You know, we have, uh, we can, like I said, we think in Hafen Bay could be a colorful community. Where everybody feels comfortable walking down the street. But then again, we have a place where we can actually, you know, understand, you know, we have our meetings here, things, a lot of things happen here. In this building, but, uh, there's a lot of things missing here. Not a lot of people know that we can actually have access to this. We had talked about, you know, the, the collaboration of the city, the school district, other communities now, you know, and incorporating, you know, like Moonridge. Thinking about how as, uh, leaders, role models. You know, we can better be of service for youth. I visited, you know, the high school and I saw, you know, made a quick assessment of the needs, you know, of the students at the high school. They're in big need of role models. You know, they have to be able to see, you know, that we actually, as adults, we care about them. There's so many things happening at the high school, at the middle school, that a lot of people are ignoring about. But again, that's a ignorance makes people, you know, prejudice about a specific culture. Saying that is their problem, not our problem. And their solution is detain them, put them in juvenile hall. No, that's not a solution. I'm more interested in the, in the prevention of things. We have to be able to work with the school district. When it, when it comes about then the services that they need, I mean, if you look at the, at the GPAs. Middle school, high school. It is upsetting. So how can we actually tell our children that we care? Reimagine Main Street, mental health, housing. I'm, I'm very ambitious when it comes to this. And I know we have the staff and the community to do it. And I'm looking forward to, uh, doing a lot more things because we need sleep. So, uh, I'll stop there because I can be here all day. Thank you.
Thank you, Joaquin. Councilmember Reddick.
So, uh, a few things. Someone brought up the, the state of Pillar Cito's Creek. And for several years, we've kind of, you know, sort of addressed it around the, the edges, but I think we need to clean up the creek once and for all. It's a mess and it's a, it's a shame. And people don't feel safe using the trail or going underneath the bridge. The creek needs to be cleaned up. Somebody brought up also flood control and stormwater. It looks like we're doing a lot of, uh, applying a lot of good energy to that subject. I think we also need to look at, um, flood storage, floodwater storage along the creeks like Pillar Cito's Creek and maybe even Arroyo Leone. Because knowing what I know about climate change, the sort of atmospheric rivers we've been having this past winter, you know, have been predicted by climate models. It's not gonna change. In fact, it's, it's gonna get worse if the models are correct. So I think, you know, it's, it's part of our public safety mission and health mission to make sure that we're prepared for, for storms. So flood control and stormwater are important to me. We're doing some good things around it, but I think we need to add flood storage. Communication. The one piece I would add for communication is, and Chad Hooker brought it up, people need to know what's on our agendas. So it's not enough to just say, you know, we're having a meeting next week. I think we need to talk about what we're gonna be talking about at these meetings. Even looking ahead, I mean, the council sees potential items, you know, for the next two or three meetings. The public ought to know what's coming as well, and that might help with attendance. And maybe, you know, on these major policy issues like, say, e-bikes. You know, people can sign, when they know that something's coming down the road, that we're discussing an issue. Maybe they can sign up to, you know, receive notifications on specific issues. But I think, you know, prepping people for meetings is really important and seems to be a missing piece. And, um, I, I've noticed that my community e-news is going into my spam folder. So I've, I've addressed that. I don't know if other people are having that problem. We do have a, a robust media presence, so, you know, I don't think there's much we have to, to do there. But I do think communication is important. We, we talked earlier about communication around emergency preparedness. And we actually had a contract to do a study on how we can do that better. I think it's time to, you know, move that along as part of our emergency preparedness effort. We've been talking about it now for several years and, you know, we're still trying to coordinate with the county and it's going really slowly. But, you know, when emergencies happen, you know, a lot of times it's with no warning. So we, we need actual plans and communication around those plans. So I'd like us to, to double down, you know, on that area. I think downtown economic development is certainly a priority for me. And bottom line is, we have to fix the lousy internet downtown. I'm glad, you know, we're doing the middle mile that's coming down to ninety-two, but downtown needs its own solution. I can't, you know, I can't get internet downtown. And it's infuriating to me, and I gotta believe it's infuriating for a lot of other people. And if we're gonna do economic development, broadband downtown is foundational. You know, we talked about having housing downtown, you know, more businesses downtown, but they need internet to survive. So we have to prioritize that. We have a lot of projects in the works. I'd like, like us to complete those projects. You know, we have, you know, the Carter Park, we have the Workforce Development or Opportunity Centers, you talked about it. We, we talked about greening up, you know, McDutra. I'm in favor of all of those. We've, we've started looking at them. I'd like to see us finish those. I'd like us to have more events downtown. I think that's a way, relatively easy way without having to build infrastructure to get people downtown. More events, better music, more music, more frequent music. Get people downtown. Events, arts, culture. I'm not necessarily supportive of turning Edcock into a cultural center, but I think we can address, you know, the hunger for cultural events and opportunities with events downtown. I'd like to see a lot more of that. Um, and I think we have wonderful staff in-house who've shown they have real chops when it comes to organizing events and very creatively. I don't think that's money ill-spent. Getting good bands, spending a little more money and getting good artists. I think it's worth it. You know, that's part of economic development. So that's really, really important to me. Public safety, it relates to the sheriff contract. We talked a year or two years ago about the possibility of, you know, we've already sort of offloaded the mental health response piece to cares. You know, what if we looked at, you know, um, civilian contractors to do traffic enforcement? You know, maybe there's a way to save money, you know, in the sheriff's contract by looking at, you know, laypeople who, who do traffic enforcement. I think it's done in other places. I think we ought to, you know, check that out. But, you know, we, our community needs protection. Maybe we need to revisit. I know that a lot of people don't like this for privacy reasons, but license plate readers, people have been complaining about all the petty crimes because of Prop forty-seven, you know, reducing a lot of felonies to misdemeanors. You know, maybe some surveillance of that kind would reduce, you know, costs and improve enforcement. And I know people are really sensitive about that. I'm kind of sensitive about privacy issues myself. I think we need to look at revenue enhancements. I know that there are projects in the mill at community development that could produce revenue if they could be moved along. So I, I want us to, to move along those projects that have been sort of, at least my perception is they're sort of languishing. And I know there's complicated environmental work and all that stuff, but we need to work through that. You know, if we're really committed to it, we gotta, you know, help those projects along. I, I do think the financial presentation that Ken did is, was very good and we need to, hew to the sort of guideposts he's, he's given us there. So, you know, preserving existing services, making sure we maintain the infrastructure we have. Especially like, you know, coastal trail. I know we're looking at, you know, building more trail and I'm totally in favor of, you know, bike-friendly, bike-active, you know, community. But I, I, you know, if we're concerned about, you know, the economy, we have to maintain what we have. So it's a pleasant, safe place to be and to recreate. So, you know, keeping up maintenance to existing infrastructure is really important to me. I really like the idea of the Kingdom Trails that, that Chad brought up. Most of that land would be in the county, potentially under jurisdiction of Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District or Post. But, you know, if we can support something like that, we, it's not really under our jurisdiction, but I think it's a great idea. Because the more network we have, you know, the better off we're gonna be. Especially, I think it would be very attractive as, you know, supporting our economic development. If we have nature here, people love the nature here. Let's get out in the nature and biking is, and hiking is, you know, certainly good for that. Let's see. I, I do think it would be worthwhile. I agree with Harvey and some of the speakers on Coast Skyway. We already have a venture, a local venture capitalist's financial model that, that shows that it's basically, could be financially feasible. What we don't have is a, is a, is a real feasibility study that looks at, that looks at obstacles and that looks at the money. I think a small amount of money toward a study to at least gather information, because I agree. I think the economic multiplier from something like, you know, the, the tramway, especially if you had a terminal downtown, would be a generator of local businesses and get people out of their car. So I, I think it's worth having there. But I don't think we need a lot of effort behind it at this time, just looking at some of the gathering data, basically. Certainly, um, housing is very important. I think there's a lot of staff time going into it right now. I think as we talk about the housing element, May ninth, there's some other things that we can talk about in terms of policy to help get those projects, um, help recruit people who wanna build those projects and make them more financially feasible. So I'm looking forward to that meeting on the ninth to talk about, more about that. What I don't wanna do is, I wanna make sure that, that staff time is distributed in, in a way that gets us farther down the road on housing, but that also takes care of our infrastructure. Because once we stop taking care of infrastructure, you know, the, um, the, the cost to, to do refurbishment or, or maintenance just grows astronomically. So it's really important to make sure that those things that are sort of our basic mission, which is public health and safety and infrastructure, that we make good on those commitments. So I, I just want us to be careful as we're, you know, designing our work program that we're, you know, we're being very sensitive to all of our missions and making sure that we're distributing our time in a way that's effective and fair. So that's, that's basically where I'm coming from. I, I think that we have a lot on our work plan already. I'd like to see a lot of the stuff that's on there get done and get done finally. And I, I wonder sometimes whether we have like too much on our plan and that's why we're not actually accomplishing some things. It's like everything's sort of in a state of, we're getting there rather than we're picking things off, you know, we're getting things done. So we wanna make sure that we have a work plan that's, that actually produces results this year as well as year two. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. And now we have Councilmember Brownstone. Robert.
Great, thanks. Yeah, you know, I think it's, um, you know, as an overview, we really, for everything we've come up with. You know, we're gonna have to make sure we're differentiating between what we don't have to do right now and what is more, um, almost emergency type. There's a lot of things that used to be not thought of as emergencies, but climate change has changed all that. And I don't think, that's a hard reality to sink in. Everything, you know, two years ago, you, you were reading studies that were saying, um, yeah, this is gonna be a real threat ten to fifteen years from now, fifteen to twenty. That's how they were all framed. And that word, um, existential- framed. And that word existential kept coming up, whatever the heck that meant for folks, existential threats. The threats unfortunately are now. It's, these climate, drastic climate changes are how, you know, storms, hurricanes, et cetera. Whoever would have thought that we'd be having, you know, cyclonic-type wind gusts and tides here. But it's here. So how do we shift from being in a reactive mode to a proactive? And it's a human condition, you know? Most places in the world, people are reactive. It's very rare that you see communities, countries, governments become proactive. They're not sexy issues, you know, planning way in ahead, but that's the place we're in. And if you combine that, you know, with Kevin's budget presentation, you know, let's look, you know, look at the budget. You know, from last year, we had five million dollars on a sign. Now projecting next year only a half a million. And we have increasing expenses. And Kevin's million-dollar question at the end of his budget presentation was, how do we react? That's the great question, right? So do we shift from reactive to be proactive? And he said, there's steps we can take. So we can come up with a lot of good ideas that might cost money, but we have to come up with an equal number of ideas where we think we can save money. And maybe that means waiting on certain things because they're not as critical. So I just, and then filter all that through the budget. And maybe, you know, you gotta, you know, rinse, repeat, you know? Let's try it this way. Let's rinse, repeat that again through the budget. Maybe there's some ways we can move some money. So, and since I'm on the Budget Committee, of course, I feel that, yeah, it's gonna be, come on our Budget Committee shoulders, then we're gonna have to come back. So I'd rather think about it ahead of time so we don't have to disappoint, you know, folks later with what we think we're, we could deliver on now. So going through the columns, and I'll just try and go left from right. On affordable housing, yeah, I really like what we've been doing. We've been bringing in some of the better nonprofit housing organizations, Mercy and Mid Penn, which is something I've always advocated for. So I'm delighted that we're bringing those folks in. I think each time we look at a, when we plan for building affordable and low-income housing, I think we're trying to do a good job on anticipating what the pushback might be, you know, right, from the community and concerns. And I think we have to continue to do that. You know, five-five-five Kelly's a good example. When I came in this morning, there, at nine o'clock, there really were hardly any parking spots. So if we're gonna build something, we want to make sure we build parking solutions into it as much as possible, because then it affects, you know, a lot of the other, both businesses and services. We have some critical services and sharing the same parking area. So just as an example. I think rent stabilization, thank you Harvey for bringing that up right at the start. East Palo Alto has a model, let's study that. And, you know, rent stabilization is a nice word for rent control. Apparently, it's politically more palatable to say rent stabilization than rent control, but I'm equally fine. We'll call it what it is. Because if we don't stabilize and control the rent, I mean, the reason we had eviction controls because the rents are too high. And then more, if you don't stabilize rent, more people feel obliged to have to, to have to have incredible density, you know, multiple families living in spaces built for one family. So, you know, it's always best to go to the underlying cause. And, you know, I think, you know, different landlords are in different situations, but I think it's something really worth exploring to protect the ability for people to live here who work here. And unless someone can come up with some other fantastic solution, at least in the interim, I think it's important to think about some rent stabilization, rent control initiatives. By the way, in the list of properties that we've been looking at, you know, I saw Podesta there and five-five-kelly, was Yepsil something that we're exploring? Okay, I just didn't see it on the list. So, or at least I missed it. And, because the good news is, you know, we've gotten, you know, our Assemblyman Berman and some others, you know, there's a window where they're offering some potential windfall amounts of money to invest. So it's, and one of the biggest expenses for any kind of affordable housing is land. So if we can get a jump on that, and then we bring in the nonprofit housing organizations, then we actually really can build a lot of momentum. So, so that's what I would say on housing. On public health and emergency preparation, I really do think we should put energy and continue to put energy, Harvey mentioned healthcare district with, and really make sure we build in as much mental health care in that as well. We, you know, right now, it really seems to, you know, the county has some services, but without some of our other organizations, nonprofits, like ALS and others, I don't know how we fill the overwhelming gap on mental health. It's kids, adults, and everything we've been through in the last few years. I imagine those needs are ever increasing. So, and I think there might be some relationships with Stanford Medicine, Harvey, on that. They've been having an enlarged community health clinic strategy that's growing and growing and, you know, is more and more around the Bay Area. So I think, based on things that have happened this year, we might be able to get some more interest down there. And I'm happy to partner with some folks down there on that. You know, it came up late, that license plate, license plate readers. Most, a lot of the crime that takes place here, from what I understand, is from outsiders, you know, people coming in, coming on weekends and stuff. So I think we might be able to address some of those privacy concerns that we're really trying to identify people, you know, coming in from outside the community. And it gives a much better jump for the sheriffs to identify who those folks are. So thank you for bringing that up again, because it's been a while since we ever even thought about that possibility. So going back to this shift, and I see, you know, that the public health and safety emergency preparation really overlaps with the, now the climate resilience and sustainability, right? In other words, it's almost within the same column, because in the past, the climate resilience always seemed like a long-term plan, you know, and build in some buffering on the ocean and, you know, fighting with Coastal Commission, but sort of these long-range plans. But now, it's part of the emergency planning. When I think what happened in these last flooding, I mean, the flooding in our own streets in Moon Ridge, you know, threatening our sewer plants, really frightening. So, you know, Walter gave a great, oh, he's not there. Tell him I gave him a shout-out. Tell him I gave him a shout-out, you know? You know, he gave a pretty darn good rundown, you know, of our, you know, master storm planning issues. And, yeah, I think we have delayed some of those projects for all kinds of varied reasons. But now, you know, maybe we really need to shift. When I look at, you know, our capital improvement plan and what's funded and not, we might really have to think about, you know, getting more funding into what's going on in these, in our, in these creeks and ditches. I mean, seeing that water rise to the level of the Main Street Bridge, I mean, what? I don't know how to make the case better. Do we need to show videos at some meetings showing what went on? And, yeah, right? Yeah. I mean, to remind folks, yeah, it's a nice, warm summer now, there's no rain. When we bring these issues up, you know, picture speaks a thousand words. We have to say, this is what we're talking about. This is life-threatening. If our, you know, no one ever comes to the meetings when we, when John presents on, you know, sewers, right? It's not a sexy issue. But wow. You remember a couple of years ago, we had the three-hundred-thousand-dollar, three-hundred-thousand-gallon in El Granada, the sewer seepage and flooding. And, boy, you see raw sewage coming down your streets. So these are the kind of things, emergency and health and preparation, that I really want to focus on. And, yeah, really look at those stormwater issues so we can avoid those videos and photos in the past. I don't think anyone in the community will begrudge us. It just means we're making choices to prevent these emergencies and be proactive instead of reactive. Because otherwise, we feel we don't have any control. And the best thing for a community to feel safe is to feel like, wow, okay, we're doing things, we're gonna have some control over these emergencies in the future. On economic recovery and downtown improvement, I love the idea of maybe having some weekends where we convert parts of Main Street to a more pedestrian mall, right, and pull traffic around there. I think it would be great to have some better signage, maybe do a paint, you know, if we're gonna pay for a consultant, someone says we bring in too many consultants. I know a while ago, I thought about, you know, why don't we help the stores, you know, do a Paint the Town initiative, bring in a style consultant, say, hey, these would be some great colors, these are some things, and we can all help paint, you know, community, bring people down. I'll be the first one to pick up a paintbrush and help our businesses, you know, just brighten things up and make it fun. I'd like to see more music on the weekends, on the street. Have you ever been down to Santa Cruz on a weekend? And, you know, we can license the musicians, give them a little honorarium, they can put a little collection pot. That is a charm that people want to keep coming back to, not just inside our community, but from outside, you know, and bring their kids, you know, it makes, it builds an atmosphere, you know, and involves your other senses, you know, when you have And, let's see. You know, we have an Art and Wine Festival coming up, second one. I'm really sad that I gotta be out of town then for a child's graduation from out-of-state college, but it was incredible. And in the middle of the street, if you saw, there were these tents. And there were wineries from all over the place, from Paso Robles had some of the best wine. Some of their wines were so good that last weekend, that's where I was, in Paso Robles, visiting the vineyards, right? But we can bring them back, you know? Yeah, you know, create some, you know, marketing for them and other wineries. We can create that. And then all of a sudden, oh, they don't just have a farmer's market in Half Moon Bay, they have a friggin' wine tasting festival like every other weekend, you know, almost a stable thing. I promise you, they will come. If we have wine tasting tents, people will come on certain weekends. So it's not just a once-a-year, you know, wine tasting. Then you add a little music on the streets, you know, it's night out wine and music, you know? So I think we can combine some of those ideas. Working with the school districts, yeah, I think we could do, it really resonates with me, Joaquin, that knowing what's going on in the schools, whether it's mental health issues, drug and alcohol issues. I remember speaking to a member of a school board a couple of years ago. I don't know if it was the Cabrillo School District or School Board, but, and this person said, you know what? No one on our school board ever goes into the schools. And it stayed with me. I don't know how true that is, but maybe we, I would, I'd be the first, as a council member, to partner with a school board member and go into some of the schools once in a while. And I'll take time off from work to do that. Because how the heck do we really stay informed and work in collaboration with the school board and the school district? So there needs to be, you know what I mean, just feet on the ground doing something like that. And then now you've got, and then we may, we may all have then connections with different school board members. Now we can have some collaborative initiatives, because we've built relationships. So I think something that, like that might really be helpful. You know, we also heard from our budget presentation that, you know, all of a sudden, the county is relooking at a lot of its costs. And, you know, we're not a full-service city, we always bring that up. So we contract. We pay for services with the county. So again, these are things that we have to think about. When we think about, Joaquin Harvey brought up annexing a number of different areas, that'll also have to come into our, you know, monetary calculations. Well, wait a minute, if the county is cutting all this stuff, how much more are we gonna have to provide when we annex? Because that's a new element that, you know, whether it's the sheriffs, the fire, the county, we would have to pick up in any, either unincorporated areas that the county currently picks up. So again, I just want to keep that on our radar screen, that that is an important financial piece. Finally, I also, you know, when people come up with certain projects, so we're talking about the Skyway project, building a pool, continuing to work on Carter Park. And, you know, we always ask, well, where's the money gonna come from? And sometimes, you know, politicians will say, well, you know, we'll take out a loan, or we'll take out a bond initiative. Well, we really gotta look at what are all our outstanding loans and payments, whether it's, you know, library loans, Stone Pine, you know, always have that up there. This is, these are ongoing, consistent costs. So if we, as a city, need to take out a loan to help build a Skyway, or, and I'll say twenty-million-dollar pool, because I think that ten-million-dollar figure was way low, or continuing, you know, to implement Carter Park, well, we gotta balance that against not only existing loans, but as we look at some of these priorities, you know, for me, a top priority is building a fiber internet. Absolutely. I thought that presentation by Greg was great. I think we can do it cheaper if we take it as a community. I think he, he was throwing out some numbers that felt a little high to me, but I think we could do some pilots with that cheaper. But to me, that's a priority. When we have these emergencies and people can't even have internet, and their phones don't work, because most, a lot of folks no longer have AT&amp;T, right, we, they have phones that are connected to the internet, so that goes down, the towers go down. If that's a top priority, that's what I'd be willing to take a loan or bond initiative out. I'm just saying that's my personal emergency piece that I would want to spend money on. But then I gotta balance that against, well, how many loans do we already have, you know? So we need to be able to, we need that tool to just always keep that in balance. And, and I think, if I got everything here. Oh, yeah, one last thing on communication. Oh, yeah, one last thing on communications. You know, the other day, I was thinking, wow, I really want to see that slide deck that we had on the e-bikes. And, you know, for both us and the community, I think we've talked about putting our decks, right, somewhere where we and the community could see. I think we've asked about that a couple of times, but I don't think it's taken place. So interestingly enough, the only place I found that deck was on Coastside Buzz, who got a copy of it. And I was able to look at the deck of the e-bikes. So I know we use the Half Moon Bay Review a lot as a communication piece, but I recommend that we also use Coastside Buzz, a lot of people access Coastside Buzz, and I would like to take a look on, look at that, and if we need to pay for some of that service, that's fine. But I don't think we should just rely, you know, on the review, they're great, they cover things, but, and sometimes you get a different perspective from a different.
KMBH Radio.
And KMBH Radio as well, Debbie Ruddick just mentioned. So, so, yeah, I think the more we can get communications out and more people from different communication outlets that will go out and take pictures, that builds better knowledge for folks of what's going on in the city, both inside and to build our resilience to get more people to come here on weekends, et cetera. So, yeah, let's use every resource we have. Okay, I'm done, thanks.
Thank you, Robert. I'm thinking the food has arrived, it might make sense for us to break now, grab our food, and then come back in 15 minutes or so, and I can contribute what I have to say? What's that sound like?
That is your prerogative, so it sounds good to us.
Let's eat.
Okay. So we'll take a 15-minute break, we'll get back in the room by noon, you can be stuffing your faces, that's okay, we'll be doing the same, and we'll keep working, but, yeah, bio-break and kinda get a little fresh air. Thanks.
Is the budget that Kenneth presented. It's very upsetting that we are down by 5 million. That's, and I know that's not written in stone, but it is still obvious that there's a considerable difference between our projections last year and those for this year. So I'd like to be thinking in terms of prioritizing projects, and that includes capital improvement projects, among other things. One of the other things that has come to my mind during the discussion here is how cavalierly easy it is for someone on council to say, oh, let's just apply for a grant for this project. And what I have found over the past year, watching the way projects develop or fail to develop, is the enormous amount of staff time spent behind the scenes, as far as I'm concerned, on getting things done, all the things that we want done. We have an amazing staff, but it feels as if the staff is working on 50 things at once, and some of them are overlapping, and some of them are working on more than one, but it doesn't feel like we're marching ahead the way council has said they want us to march ahead in the past, like, let's pick five areas, let's concentrate on those five areas. That all sounds very simple, it's not simple, I guess. And that's where I'm getting, it's partially our responsibility for asking too much of staff, but it's also staff's responsibility to inform us what we're asking, what it's going to cost. So I look at things like Carter Park, and the amount of time that we've spent in the last couple of months talking about and having staff work on Carter Park, these are costs that we didn't know were gonna come up, and they're not costs where you can say, okay, it's a consultant, or it's a piece of material that is gonna cost money. It's staff time that's been diverted from something else onto Carter Park's issues. So in terms of Carter Park, I'm gonna end just one thing, I would like to see that agendized for a future council meeting to discuss. I'd really like to know what is the extent of the redesign on Carter Park vis-à-vis this year's flooding, and how much of a projection they're doing for what future flooding could be costing. Also, the idea of incorporating into that discussion a floodwater storage system of some sort. If it's a bathtub full of water, let's capture that water and use it if we can. So that's, these are just things that come to mind, but I would like to see that agendized. In terms of an overall philosophy, it is now, let's finish the projects that we've started, and let's throw out some of the projects that we began on, that we haven't gotten anywhere on for lack of time or funding. So I look at things like repair of sidewalks. And, you know, I'm sorry, that's one area that is not critical. Street restriping, you know, I mean, we could limit what we do with street repair. I'm not saying we shouldn't be at it, but we shouldn't be spending a whole lot of money on street repair. We have got an east side parallel trail that we've been talking about for years, it's not done yet. And I know there are lots of reasons, and it's not staff's fault, but I'd like to see that done. I'd like to see people be able to get from Moon Ridge to the harbor and back. I'd like the electric bikes to be able to ride on a, something other than the Coastside When we talk about things like the bike and ped, ped trails, and we talk about our bike and ped committee and their input, their input was largely bikers, that's who largely makes up the bike and ped committee. You're looking what? There's a mix, but it's largely bikers, almost all of them are bikers. A lot of the bikers also walk, but I know my sister was on it for a while. So I know that there's a prejudice toward bikers on that committee, so. And I'm all for biking, but I'm not for biking on the coastal trail, I've said that before, and I will continue to say that. It is, it's not helping us with our infrastructure at all, it's not helping our coastal erosion at all, and it's not helping anybody's mental health who wants to be able to walk peaceably on the trail. Signage, abs- effing-lutely, if you know what I mean. We have got to put a big sign up on 92, that's a priority. That's a priority because of economic recovery and development, it's a priority when we talk about emergency preparation, it's a priority when we talk about trying to increase our TOT, transportation, mobility, all of that, it goes into many of the categories. We need, and, and, and arched, an arch, I don't, we've had designs for this sign on and off over the years, I've seen at least two, nothing ever happened with it. You know, I know it's, it's not an easy one, but I think that's a priority for me. Rent stabilization. I think of rent stabilization as a poor long-term solution, but in desperate times, a critically important short-term solution. We have got to be looking at how long it's gonna take us to get 1,000 new homes built on the coast. It's gonna take a lot longer than I'm gonna be alive, and we may never reach that goal, but we don't have any affordable housing now, actually, in production, or lived in on the coast, other than what we had before I even came into city council 10 years ago. So I know there are reasons for that, and I know we're working hard on it, and I know we have lots of potential. In the meantime, let's help people, let's stabilize the rents, let's look at what East Palo Alto has done, and adopt something as quickly as possible. One of the things that, when we talk about affordable housing, public health, emergency, all of these categories that we have, the thing that comes to mind is that they're all affected by our inability to provide affordable housing. That's where mental health comes in. You can't be in a good state mentally if you're living in a home with, in a room with three kids and a mate, and nobody can do their homework, and they're all waiting in line to go to the bathroom, they have to share the kitchen, that's not good for anybody's mental health. So I think housing, which has been so critically important, is, continues to be important. I look at all the time that we've spent on things like the housing element, it's gotta be done, I get that. So if it has to be done, and it's taking time away from our ability to produce affordable housing, which it may or may not be, I don't know, let's cut something else out. Okay? And that's, that's one of the reasons why I want us to really look at our CIP a little I think part of maintaining and improving our infrastructure has gotta be our stormwater program, and I think we need to get, we need to put energy into that. I think that has to be, including all the problems that we're having with Pillar Cedas Creek, and the Keigho Ditch, and the Pullman Ditch, and all the rest of it. That, that's an area where I think we need to put a lot of effort. The problems that we see there now are only gonna grow, they're not gonna get smaller, they're gonna get worse. And now is the time to come up with a plan and figure out how to deal with it. I love the idea of traffic enforcement being handled by lay citizens, taking, taking away from our sheriff's contract. I don't know how that would work politically with a sheriff, it may not work at all, but I like the idea of it, if it, if it could decrease the cost of our sheriff's contract, or help us to increase the kind of crime control that the sheriffs do, and take away from things like traffic control. I don't know, but I think that's something we need to talk about. I love the idea of painting the town, I think that was brilliant. I'd like us to see more music, I like the variety of music, and I also think things like food trucks would be fun. And the more kinds of events, like Robert and Debbie talked about, that we can have on Main Street, the more we can attract tourist dollars to Main Street to help us with our I think that's, that's about all that I have right now. So I'm gonna stop and let Steph wrap things up for us. Oh, people wanna react, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on a, I agree with 85%, 90% of everything he said. The one thing that I would push back strongly against, and again, it goes back into my be proactive versus reactive, that ends up costing more in the end when we wait on certain things, it would be the street repair and sidewalk repair. Because you remember last night, Maz did it in his presentation, really got into some of the detail of the street repair, and, you know, everyone, well, we all know what the damaged potholes can repair, but way before potholes, sometimes you start with the cracks, and that lets the water seep in, and it undermines underneath, so, and at that point, you just, you know, you do a slurry over it, and, you know, it gives you a few years of protection, like varnishing, you know, like black topping something. So I think that kind of maintenance, and, boy, if you ever want to get our constituents riled up, you look at the pothole, it's crazy how many potholes there are, just from this last winter, you know, heavy trucks, thing, really, the pressure, anything that was weak at that point really took a beating. So I think this would be a very bad time to save on that, even just to get us back to where we were before the storms.
I agree.
Okay, the sidewalk thing also, I remember a presentation from senior coastiders, and, you know, the uneven sidewalks creates issues for folks, and, and even just a really bad uneven, because, you know, with uneven sidewalks, sometimes you just have to fill in, shave it, you know, sand it down, it's not, you don't have to repave sidewalks, but again, I think, one, it's a good preventative from lawsuits, because it's our sidewalks, it's on our watch, and, but also to make it, you know, make sure everyone feels they've got safe access, you know, walking the sidewalks, and some folks, it's more difficult for others. So, yeah, I think I would keep, that's the only thing I would say, keep those, because if we don't, maintain them a little bit, they just get worse.
Thank you.
Yeah, so if that's okay.
Thank you.
I want to agree with that, deferred maintenance is very, very costly and dangerous.
I agree with you both.
All right.
I changed my mind.
No, thank you, thank you for being flexible on that. The other thing I'm wondering, if there's some of the, you know, I know when we bought stone pine, there were certain costs, looking back on it now in retrospect, right, that we wish, we didn't realize how much more money we'd have to put in, and we wish we'd kind of figured that out and folded it into the loan maybe, so we'd have easier payments, right? So, our bad, we didn't, you know, get that all right. But I noticed that all the corporate yard funding is, not much is unfunded, so I'm wondering if you could just take a look if there's some things that could be shifted to that could be shifted to other C I P projects potentially, especially. I'm sure, I'm really happy to see all our sewer improvements are fully funded. But are there other things that, because of all the storms and emergencies, that we could slow down a bit on the corporate yard and maybe move over to something else, take a look at it? Because this is a high, pretty high number there, you know, $2 or $3 million or something. There might be something. I don't know. I leave it to you. But think about what could help prevent, you know, what is more costly that could be delayed in some other C I P, but something that we could get by on the corporate yard, you know, a little bit, at least for the next year or so? Because we're still assessing some of the storm damage stuff, and trees are still falling. I mean, you know, just trying to figure that out. Okay. That's it.
With this idea of saving money with civilian enforcement of traffic laws, I don't know exactly how that would work. But if we could actually do that and save money, the side benefit of that would be that I think the community would feel a lot better that, they would feel safer that armed deputies are not stopping people for a missing taillight or something like that. So that's, that would be a double benefit if we could get that to actually happen.
Matt, did you want to say something?
I can respond to that. And the good news is John and I actually have a meeting with the new sheriff and undersheriff and assistant sheriff next week. So this is certainly something we can broach with them. I'm sure there will be pushback. But my bigger concern is, under the guise of reducing our sheriff's contract, we have the lowest level of service that they will, they're willing to provide. I won't get into the details of what that means, but they can't provide us any less staff than they currently provide us. We are at their minimum level of service. And so we can talk about some options, but I do not, at this point, believe it will save us any money on that contract. But we will bring it up when we meet with them next week. And, you know, it was brought up under the previous administration. It wasn't received well. It's possible that there might be something to be talked about here. So happy to bring that up and bring that back to you. But again, I do not believe it's going to save us money. I understand from Harvey's standpoint, there might be some other reasons why it could be beneficial. So we can explore that.
Yeah, go ahead.
How would people feel about bringing back the issue of license plate readers? You know, the, I forget what, it might have been Pew came out with a report on policing in California. And they actually recommended license plate readers as a way to reduce negative interactions between police and, you know, people inside their cars. So I think we might not have had as robust a discussion about the advantages versus disadvantages as we might have, especially in the Prop 47 environment.
I'm happy to share on that front as well. This is a conversation I've actually had with Captain Albin, our new captain, over the last several months. They've had some really good success using A L P Rs. But she also understands the history and the concerns here. One of the things that has changed since that discussion as well is, it was already moving in that direction, but just a few weeks ago, the County Board of Supervisors passed a resolution really establishing how they will not interact with ICE anymore and provide support to ICE. And that was one of the main topics that came up in the previous discussion was concerns about our undocumented, you know, community members and them being then fed into a system. I think there's, if it's something that we want, the sheriff's office could prepare a new presentation, address the concerns first that we heard before and what may have changed since then, and just start that discussion in a way that it's just a discussion, not this is what we're doing. I think we learned last time as well that there were some assumptions made as we brought that forward that it's a little different than it was, you know, the perception of the community.
Yeah, and I think one of the goals is reducing negative interactions between, you know, drivers and passengers and police. So I think we haven't had as full a discussion as we might. We still might not want to do it, but at least, you know, we, you know, cover, you know, all the information. I just think, you know, I know people deny that there's a crime issue here, but I heard on the campaign trail, people are really concerned about petty crime. You know, it's not being addressed. And I agree with Robert that a lot of our issues are from people out of town, not locals at all. So, you know, one way to help with enforcement, you know, in that situation are things like this. So I just wanted to throw that out there, especially since, I think it was Pew, you know, was looking at ways to reduce these sorts of negative interactions. And one of their recommendations was, you know, L P Rs. So anyway.
The issue of civilian traffic control, and to go back to what you were talking about, Harvey, I just want to clearly define the scope of, because when I think about that, I was thinking about, because it's come up a few times, like on busy ti, either rush hour times or certainly on weekends, some traffic control folks, they're not in cars. They're, I mean, it's like in every country you go, you know, you see these traffic control folks, got some snappy, you know, outfits on there, standing up on a bit of a podium. Could be a retired, you know, police officer, whatever, but someone who kind of knows what they're doing, but who is also a vendor that's given the seal of approval by the sheriffs, you know, that they could recommend. It might actually cost us a little bit. I'm talking about some separate from sheriff's contracts that I think that could, you know, people would, A, it's a very visible thing that we're doing, and it helps. You know, at a busy intersection, just someone standing there, whether or not they'll have control of the traffic lights. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. But almost as a separate vendor, unarmed, nice people who wave to folks too. And, you know, it's kind of like a people person who can, and also doesn't mind sitting there breathing in all that car exhaust. But I always feel it's a thankless job. But I was thinking something like that, or at least pilot that, could we possibly pilot it with a vendor? See if it's making any impact or not at key intersections? And summer and holidays is a perfect time, you know, to test that out a little bit. I can't remember. We brought it up a few times, or certain issues that got in the way.
It's actually in the work plan. It was in the work plan for last year. And then, of course, we had the turnover of sheriff's captains, the turnover of sheriff. That will be part of our discussions this year. We've already started to broach that with the captain, looking towards the summer planning. So.
And a pilot's always good also, Harvey, so we can at least assess, wow, this did work, didn't work, how did the public respond, you know? And then we could see whether or not to expand or consolidate or make changes, something like that.
I think that's a good idea to have that kind of traffic control. But my main point is that I would like to reduce pretextual stops. Okay? That's a different issue than traffic control. They're both important, but from my perspective, I think we could do more for the community welfare by reducing pretextual stops.
I agree. Yeah, and to me, that's not a cost issue. That's more of a good discussion, good discussion with our sheriff and our Public Safety Subcommittee. And I think we have a sheriff who's much more open to hearing about those concerns and suggesting solutions.
Actually, I would like to comment on the license plate readers. You know, once we start opening, you know, camps like that, is a, I don't think it's going to build a relationship with the law enforcement. Actually, it will affect, you know, the relationship with the law enforcement now that you have a, there's still the fear, you know, there's still the fear of, even though San Mateo County, you know, passed, that they will not cooperate with the, you know, with ICE. There's still the fear that whoever is managing, you know, those images, you know, the trust issue, right? When we talk about crime, we have to actually understand the root of crime, you know, to be able, how can we prevent crime? You know, and that's why we, you know, the economic recovery initiative is very important to me, you know, because everything comes from that. We look into communities that have been affected by crime. You know, there's the unemployment rate, very high, the mental health, you know, housing. So we, I mean, I understand that maybe most of the people committing petty crimes in the community, they're not from our community. But we still have, you know, right now, especially the youth, you know, if you walk around town, you see a lot more tagging, you know, on our walls around the community. But we have to be able to address that. You know, but license plate readers, you know, is another opportunity, you know, for put fear into some of the old drivers, some of the community members. There's so many things. Right now, we are dealing with, you know, a lot of people not being able to pay the registration, not being able to pay for their insurance. They're not able to, you know, so a lot of the vehicles on the road, you know, are uninsured, right, because of how, you know, our economy has been affected. So before, you know, for me, before we start implementing things like this, I have to look into other solutions, you know, and don't go jumping to, okay, maybe we should set up cameras at intersections. So we should set up, you know, on our streets. And then what? You know, it's, I mean, it's probably what community that is, you know, is still in a very concerned, is changing. That's a fact. The relationship is being rebuilt between our community and law enforcement. You know, we see more friendly faces on our, you know, community, from the law enforcement community or sheriff or captain, who, I mean, that I see. I saw her the other day at San Benito, eating, you know, buying a sandwich with her kid. So we see that. But you know, I don't see, I know, I don't see a need in having, you know, set up cameras, you know, to read our license plates.
Well, it would depend sort of also on where you might locate them. Like I think the previous discussion, we were talking about locating, like one just at the south end of the tunnel, one further along 92, because the goal, you know, is, are those people who are committing crimes here and then leaving. So you have them, you know, on access roads at a distance from the city, so you're not looking at everybody inside the city limits. If the goal is to stop outside crime, then you're locating them, you know, at the access and egress points that are, where you're best capture, you know, those sorts of vehicles.
I think this is a discussion that we need to have. And I don't think that here's
Right.
the time to have it. I think we ought to hear from the sheriff about the program and have the discussion then. Could we also put the chart back up here? Because there are a couple of things that I forgot. Thank you. Let me just look through it real quickly. Yeah, scroll to a little bit this way, to the right. Oh, yeah, there, there, let's see. One of the things I wanted to say was about the pool. We've had a lot of people talk to us about having a pool. And boy, I would love it. It would be the best thing in the world for me. I currently belong to the College of San Mateos Athletic Center and pay to go there to swim in the pool. But we are not a full-service city. We do not have money for a pool. To me, if the citizens of this town want a pool, then they should start an initiative and consider taxing themselves for the pool. I don't think that's something the city ought to be doing. There are other ways the city needs to be involved with community activities. And I think they are more after-school for the kids, activities, community center, cultural centers, those types of things. But a pool is a huge expense. And it's not just the building of the pool. It's also the operation and maintenance of the pool, staffing of the pool, all of that. It's something way beyond our small city. The cities that have pools are generally full-service cities. So I wanted to make that comment. In terms of the Skyway, I love the idea of a Skyway. I think in our current economic situation that I don't want to take $72,000 for a feasibility study and take that out of the $500,000 that we've got left over for discretionary fund projects. So I am not for doing the feasibility study right now. And I think that's all I've forgotten.
Okay. So I think what we'll do at this point is I will just kind of walk through the priorities and share what we heard and how we interpreted it, especially areas of consensus, and see if we can kind of nail those things down. And then that should leave us with a few discussion items to kind of nail down. And we as staff can throw out some ideas of how we can address some of the items that may not have consensus but seem like there's some interest in them, if that'd be okay. And Jill, feel free to pop in if you think I've missed anything. Thank you to Jill and Vivica for, they have to be so locked in during this session. It's incredible. So under affordable housing, I would say the main thing that I've heard is related, as an additional or a change, is the exploration of rent stabilization, rent control. And so that is a major lift. I will, I will share that. It will take staff and attorney time. Ultimately, depending on how far we go with it, it obviously takes an incredible amount of community outreach and working with the community. In a department that obviously has some major priorities, which means we're probably going to have to look at shifting staff from other areas of the city to help supplement that. But that was clear. And so unless I hear otherwise, we will plan to incorporate that into the work plan for this time.
Yeah, I thought we did.
And it sounds like it's high priority.
Yes. I thought we did work on that a couple of years ago. Why can't we just go back and use the work that we did?
I'm sure that we can learn from that, but I'm sure a lot has changed since then as well. Housing law has evolved dramatically in the last five years. So Catherine, do you see any way that this isn't a significant lift, even just the research and kind of the starting point for it?
Yeah, so a few years ago, we did do some initial research on rent stabilization. But the council ultimately, you know, before we got too far in, I'd say on the research and the outreach, directed staff to move more towards the tenant protections and the ordinance that was ultimately adopted. So yeah, this would be, you know, a significant amount of work. I, you know, will share that in the draft housing element that was recently released, there is a program related to mobile home rent control. You know, so that would be potentially part of this. But there would be significant work. I think we'd also want as staff to look at the extent to which state law allows rent control in Happen Bay units. So there's the 1995 Costa-Hawkins that prevents us from applying rent control to single-family homes or condos or units built after 1995. So that would be a constraint, and we'd want to, you know, research the level to which, you know, we have units that would qualify.
Does looking at East Palo Alto's model help save time on some of that research?
We always borrow from other jurisdictions.
So maybe at least let's take another look, because hopefully, I'm assuming they've updated all their laws to be.
Yeah, my understanding is they did have to actually set aside a large chunk of their ordinance after Costa-Hawkins. But they, I believe they do have mobile home rent control there.
I.
Maybe you can speak to that, actually, John.
Having worked for the city of East Palo Alto, I can say a few things. One, they got in, I believe, prior to the Costa-Hawkins in some regards, but they are also abound by some of that. So they have, so there's a little bit of issue of just apples and oranges. But certainly, we can learn from their work. They've done a lot of detailed work in terms of how they administer and deal with it. What I can also tell you, in that jurisdiction, there's at least one full-time position fully devoted to dealing with the rent control. And then it's expanded well beyond that person to a lot of folks, including a commission, I think, that's involved with this. to a lot of folks, including a commission, I think, that's involved with this, and a whole host of issues. So they have a lot more units, but, but when we talk about the lift and we talk about the ongoing obligations, the ordinance is the easy part, it's the forever ongoing managing and then relations with, with the tenant, with the, with the owners is, is an ongoing challenge and issue. Again, we're a different jurisdiction, fewer units. I've done with, I've also dealt with mobile home rent control, they're a little easier, a little more straightforward, still challenging, but, but it's all, it's all doable, there's, but the Costa Hawkins does have significant limitations.
So I think what I'll recommend, and you'll see it in the work plan, is, is we want to take this incrementally, so that we're not devoting a full project into something that maybe as we realize the outcomes maybe isn't working. So I think we'll start with the legal constraints, we'll bring that forward, and then we can talk about an analysis of kind of the implications of how rent control, under those constraints, could impact the community. And then if we continue forward, then we talk about what that means as a commitment by the city and some of the stuff that John just addressed.
Yeah, I want to make clear that we would want cost data. You know, what does it cost to develop it? What does it cost to implement it? Not just year one, but on an ongoing basis, so. There is, depending on the number of units, there's going to be a cost benefit ratio there, so.
Right.
I, I understand the, the, the pain it's causing people here, rents are, you know, out of sight for, you know, all housing, single-family homes, everything. So I understand the need, but given the state of our finances, too, we need to understand the costs, so.
And then, obviously, under affordable housing, that's the one addition, there's all the things we're already doing that remain high priority and will continue to work on, the, the policy work that Jill's team is working on, the short-term support that Jill's team and our Community Vitality Division are working on, and, of course, the pursuit of constructing affordable housing, which.
Yeah, I think the, the discussion around the housing element is going to be instructive as well, and we'll have other opportunities, you know, to contrast and compare, so.
I, I suspect that as we dig into implementing the housing element, there's going to be new projects that spin off of that, they're going to be of high importance, too, so. Excuse me. Under public health, safety, and emergency prep, I think we got some clarifications that fit with the stuff we're already working on, so I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on that. Of course, the big changes is the discussion about, are there things we can do to mitigate the increasing costs of our sheriff's contract? And the great news is, we're engaged with the sheriff on that, so that will be moving forward, and there was high agreement on that. It sounds like there's enough agreement that we at least want to bring forward a discussion of ALPRs. And I think one of the things that I was tasked with when I came on board in this new role, but has been delayed because of everything that's been going on, not just for us, but for our new sheriff and her team and building her team, is some sort of public meeting with the sheriff's office to just talk about the issues on the coast, talk about the work that we're doing and, and how we can work together. So I think that's probably the opportunity, is to bring the sheriff out for probably a special meeting and, and have kind of a workshop or a, a community meeting on law enforcement and public safety, and there's different topics that maybe we can touch on as part of that.
Well, they haven't given us their annual report yet either. Remember, it was, we're going to wait on that until the new sheriff got her feet wet and all that stuff, so we still need.
I think that's the same meeting, yeah.
Yeah, crime summary, and then, you know, again, like, some people say, oh, crime's not an issue here, other people say, oh, there's a lot of crime here, a lot, you know, crime, a lot of crime is, you know, what is the perception of crime? And that's why a community meeting is a really good idea, because you're going to get a lot of different perspectives there, so. But we, we have to have that, that annual report, it's a starting point, I think, and have a chance to digest that in advance of any kind of a, you know, public workshop.
Right. The other, you know, there's some other smaller things, the, I think, one that we'll discuss later on in this meeting is the, what Harvey proposed, the healthcare district, the creation of a healthcare district. He shared it under annexation, though there's a relation, I think that is separate from exploring annexing other parts of the coast. So we, we post, put that under public health and safety, and I think it looks like there's some support, but probably that warrants a discussion later today, just as far as where it fits in the work plan.
Yeah, and, and I would suggest, you know, I thought one of the brilliant ideas that, that surfaced there a couple of years ago was, you know, bring down the folks from Oregon to talk about, you know, their cares-related program. I forget what it was called, senior moment, but.
Cahoots.
Cahoots.
Yeah.
So, you know, there is this life services district that serves Mendocino and Sonoma, and I, I think parts of Humboldt County. You know, we should have somebody from that district come down and talk about how it works for them, you know, how they got started, how they're funded, what, what the money they raise can, can pay for. I mean, that's even a less denser district than we have here, and somehow they managed to make it work. So I think it would be helpful to talk to people who have their own sort of coastal rural life care district and find out, you know, how it works, so.
Mayor, would you be comfortable right now just taking a quick vote to see if we've got some general consensus on exploring the healthcare district?
Absolutely. Yes.
So, we'll, we'll figure out where that fits into, oh, and Lisa can talk about it in the context of the.
We actually have started.
Use the, can you use the mic, Lisa, sorry? If it reaches.
I know. So we have started some very, very preliminary work as part of the age-friendly group, because we understand that looking into healthcare involves more than just, we're looking at a lot of different options, and actually pursuing a healthcare district is something that the committee, including Harvey, is very interested in, and so that is a very big part of our discussion, so it actually has already, has already started. And we are working, Supervisor Mueller has staff on that committee as well, so they are part of the discussion, as well as the county health, health, health department and the ambulatory services department. So we have the right people at the table, and we're still inviting and encouraging people to join. So, I mean, we've already started that discussion, so I'd be amenable to, I mean, keeping it in our age-friendly group, because age-friendly is going beyond just the core group, and it's kind of expanding out into the needs of the entire community.
And it sounds like a piece of that would be the presentation that we just heard about from Councilmember Reddick and.
Yes.
That, those types of efforts to learn more before we make the decision to.
And Councilmember Brownstone mentioned that because of his work at Stanford, he's aware of what they're doing with community clinics, so.
And.
Maybe you could be part of the discussion with the age-friendly group.
And somebody actually, Stanford has come up in our discussions. We're a very small, we've started out as a very small committee, so it's been mostly me making the outreach and, you know, making and having meetings with people, but now we're getting larger, and Harvey and I are very excited that more people are, are joining our committee and taking on some of the responsibility. So Stanford was one of the partners mentioned, and we actually are in active talks with Dignity Health, because they have an office here as well, so. So yes, if you could pass, if there's a contact you have that you think would be beneficial for us to reach directly to, I would love that.
Or someone you could twist an arm on. That might be even more helpful. There's a couple items under this that I think we do need to discuss, I'll just share them, and maybe we can come back to them. One is a safe parking program, this is for people living in vehicles and RVs. The county, we, we submitted a request in partnership with a nonprofit to, to develop one of these programs on the coast last year, and it was approved. The county started delaying it, and then the storms and shooting, and, and it's still in the, it's, it's floating with the county right now. We do plan to take that back up when, when, when the county is ready, and they're a partner in it, so it's a, very much a joint project, but it's one of those things that, at this point, we're just waiting, but when it comes, we're going to have to hit it hard, and it is going to be a major lift, so I just wanted to make sure you were of that. There's a couple that we'll want to ask questions about. One is the safe gun storage ordinance, this came up earlier in the year, and it was decided to put it off to this meeting. It's not a huge lift, but it does take staff and legal resources. Of course, like Catherine said, we would steal a lot from everybody else, I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel. Part of the, the workload for that will depend on community reaction. You know, if, if it seems like the community's supportive of it, it's, it's not a major lift. If it becomes controversial, it could become a very major lift. So I think towards the end of the meeting, let's talk about that. I see that as something that could be in kind of a, a floating category, where if certain things happen, we could pursue it, but, but, you know, I'll leave that to you all. Looks like we want to discuss it now, so let's do it.
I want to make sure that, you know, our, our discussion of the housing element, I think, is going to produce other ideas, too, so I don't think we want to, you know, we want to reserve some room for that discussion, because there might be other things that are a little more higher priority or a little more urgent, so.
Yeah, my thinking was, maybe we ought to be talking to the, the school district. When we talk about safe gun storage, we're talking about kids, for the most part, right?
Yes.
And so the school district ought to be involved in that conversation as well. Maybe the Boys and Girls Club could take it on as a project, I don't know.
Well, ultimately, we're the only ones that can adopt that ordinance, so.
No, 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 I understand that, but maybe they could do some of the legwork, or.
They, they would certainly need to be part of the outreach and support, so, yeah. The other item, we actually had direction to pursue this, and, and then obviously 2023 happened, which is the off-leash dog pilot down at Poplar Beach. We talked about piloting for this summer, and I'm not sure it's even realistic this summer, to, to establish part of Poplar Beach as a, a place where people have their dogs off-leash, which would then allow other parts of the beach to not have dogs at all, so.
Well, it is a serious thing, you know, I was attacked by a dog last year, so. We need to maybe postpone it for, you know, further down the, you know, down the year, but we, something we need to talk about. And with having a lot more dogs out on the beach, and we need to maybe be friendly for everybody, so, but we definitely have to work on it.
All right, moving into community and climate resilience and sustainability, the, the new things that we heard, I would say the major thing, which was already a project, but it sounds like we need to bring back and then have a bigger discussion on, is Carter Park. As everybody knows, there's been delays related to an adjacent property owner. There was a question about the redesign based on what we've learned, and I know that those efforts are underway. The park was originally designed with the understanding that that area floods and that all the improvements have to be able to survive flooding and, and not require a complete rebuild or major maintenance after a flood. I think, and Maz may want to speak to this a little bit, we're going to do more, and that's already been engaged with the architect, is that fair to say?
Correct. I mean, we're, we're looking at the different types of materials that were originally specified for the project and reducing anything that would be problematic in a flood, looking at elevations and seeing where we can increase the height of things without impacting our, the, the project itself. We're looking at all those elements, changing the lighting to be, basically be able to be submersible during certain events, changing the type of materials and the turf that we're using. So we're looking at everything under that and looking at the pricing of it, so that we can work with our contractor and address that.
And capturing water?
We, that's, that's a tricky one, because the amount of water that we received this time, it would be hard to capture that volume of water and actually be able to use it. We can certainly look at that, that wasn't part of our conversations up, up to this point, but I can take another look.
You know, not just for, for Carter Park, but as part of the stormwater program, capturing stormwater is, I think.
Absolutely.
Capturing it upstream.
As part of the stormwater program, yes, we are going to look at, that's going to be part of what we look at, absolutely.
A, a, if I could just say, the streams and the water courses are a very different issue, biology, biotics, habitat preservation, all of those things, but beyond that point, there are things that get into that water course that are, can be problematic, but beyond that, you're also looking at water rights issues, surface water rights issues, things of that nature. That, that is a tricky business and dealing with that, but I think we're all committed to looking at how do we collect and deal with and reuse the other stormwater around as much as possible under, I think, everybody's concept that the council has been a one-water concept across the board, recycled water plus stormwater.
Well, plus, there's also the issue of the, the need to attenuate floodwaters, so that's why you do things like bypasses or, you know, basins where, you know, the water can just be sort of funneled into an area, slowed down, and then you slowly release it. So I think floodwater attenuation, in, in our case, would have been important, say, to protect the Oak Creek people, right? And, and to deal with the issue of the, the bottleneck of the grid, so just slowing it down, attenuating it, in and of itself.
And I know we're not going to debate, debate this and get into extensive, but remember, we have literally less than a mile between the foot, the bottom of the foothills and the ocean, and so our limits are great in terms of just being able to contain that, put it in the right place, that it doesn't impact other neighborhoods, and actually put them at risk where they weren't at risk. So I think we, you know, this becomes a partnership in the county with the issues of what's happening above these areas upstream and in the hillsides and, and dealing with this, and this has always been the challenge. I think that has always been the challenge that will continue and something that maybe our, the, the district and the special group that, that used it on one shoreline, and we can start talking more broadly about the implications and, and working in those partnerships.
There, there are clearly places outside of the city limits, you know, like the Christmas Tree Farm properties, you know, where you could attenuate flood flows, right? So yes, it would involve, you know, a lease, you know, and, and, you know, some mitigation, but by doing those sorts of projects, you avoid more cataclysmic flooding like that happened in, in Oak Creek Park and the neighborhood adjacent to it, and the sand plant, you know, so. You know, moving the sand plant is a big friggin' deal, but, you know, leasing some land for some stormwater, you know, floodwater storage is relatively inexpensive in comparison, so I think it's something that we do need to talk to the county about, for sure, yeah.
Actually, talking about Carter Park, would it be a possibility of relocating the project somewhere else? Maybe, I knew it was mentioned about the Johnson House area. I don't know if you attended, last year there was an event by the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space, and they had a stage over there. And yes, you know, I was, I was there, I don't know if anybody else attended, and it's a beautiful view. You know, you have to be able to relocate an amphitheater, you know, to that area, and we don't have to deal with the, with the permits, you know, about Carter Park. It's something to think about. I mean, last year it was, and, I mean, it, we need, we do need an amphitheater, but relocating it to the, you know, it's still Hafen Bay, Johnson, you know, area, Johnson House area.
Yeah, I have a just overarching concern about Carter Park as well, because as I was listening to Maz, you're saying, yeah, we're, we're looking at some approaches, you know, to the water situation, but mostly what you listed was, you know, materials, and you said, yeah, we might try and find better lights, I don't know, just submersible events, and I was thinking, like, what is a reenactment of Thunderball or something? I mean, what kind of, we'll have to keep spending money, because we're not getting, we're not taking care of the water situation, because it's almost impossible there.
No, it is impossible, and, and I think maybe we didn't articulate it correctly. From day one, designing this park, we designed it knowing that it will flood, it needs to flood, it is part of what Councilmember Reddick's talking about. It, part of its existence is to capture and slow down some of those floods, so the design took that into account. I think what we learned from the storms this year is, we should expect the flooding to be more frequent and more, higher volume, and so that's where the, the additional design considerations came into play. So we expect it to flood, and that's, that's part of what will happen in the winter to this park.
Well, I was concerned from day one, because. Well, I was concerned from day one, because I remember walking around during drought years, and it was still muddy in August, you know, and we had our end of the year, you know, summer music out saying, oh my God, this is after five, six years of drought. What happens when we're out of drought and go back into a normal pattern? So, yeah, it's always been on my mind. Is it the right site? I think there might be some issues with what you were suggesting, Maken, with some environmental things. I have some groups that don't like a lot of stuff up there. But Stone Pine also we're considering for a park, but...
So many, many public agencies, land that they own, that's publicly owned, oftentimes is like adjacent to creeks, adjacent to lakes. They typically have other environmental issues. And having parks there that, you know, may be impacted during winter months is just, you know, part of the deal. And you design your parks and get use out of the land, you know, by designing to it as opposed to just avoiding it altogether. So it's usually, you know, cheaper land. So I don't see any problem with building parks and flood zones as long as it's properly designed and you understand the seasonal, you know, issues, so.
I think we need to stop the conversation now, and we will be having it in the future.
That's the takeaway, is we want to have a more robust conversation. So, under this topic, just a couple of other items. One is, there's just been some questions about Pillar Cetus Creek and some of the encampment issues. One thing I can share is the cleanup piece. We've cleaned up what we can without permits, and we're very deep into the permitting process to do the remaining cleanup, and then the fence install, which had always been contemplated and is an important part of protecting it. I think at some point there's, I think what you were alluding to, Debbie, is at some point, we need to have a discussion under the new context of when we have a safe parking program and we've got the coast house, is our tolerance for encampments and how we deal with some of those, especially along the creek and environmentally sensitive habitat areas. And I think, you know, we're reaching a point where we can do that, because that's the next step, is to prevent them from happening at all, along the creek especially.
Well, that communication is good, but it's not okay to impact the creek the way we're doing it. And it's causing, you know, bacterial overload, you know, there's been water testing that proves it. We need to get the junk out of there. The public should be able to access the creek, you know, without fear and without health issues. So we need to keep dealing with it and deal with it.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, is we are in the permitting process right now so that we can remove all that debris that has surfaced through the storms.
That's good, thank you.
If I could just say, we had a drone assessment done, back to the point of what we're doing, we had a drone assessment done by the biologists. The biologists have looked at it. They've been, you know, feeding the water, looking at the environmental issues. They are very concerned, we'll be honest. Great meeting with FEMA last week, talking about this. I think we will be moving forward. But we can't get into that area for the community. We can't get into that area until, one, the agencies will allow us, the permitting agencies, and beyond that, until the water subsides enough that we can get into the creek and deal with it. So it's an unfortunate situation where we are, but we are where we are. The good thing is, it looks like we will be funded for that removal. We're looking at 100-foot crane to have to come in and remove debris material at different places there with that. So this is a huge undertaking. I think we pegged it somewhere under a half a million dollars, but around that point for the cost of debris removal out of Pillar Cetus Creek and getting the flows working there and doing other remediation work. So this is a huge piece.
Sounds like you're doing good work, and thank you for the information. I really appreciate it.
If I may just add on that, it's not just debris from encampments or things like that. There's a lot of silt and sediment, and that is a big portion of it. And why we had the biologists look at it is because how much of that is supposed to come through there and then deposit in different areas within the bluff? So it's important for us to understand that removing it is important, but where is it going to be deposited and making sure we don't?
Yeah, because the sediments will trap contaminants, too, right? They'll have their own issues apart from water quality. So, yeah, you're right. And the disposal costs are enormous and locating, you know, where you can dispose of them. Yeah, I get that.
And then to your point, we want to prevent this from, I mean, certain things we can prevent, certain we can't. But what we can control, we want to control going forward.
Well, and you're doing it, and that's why I really appreciate the information today.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Under transportation, circulation and mobility, Jill? Oh, I skipped right over economic recovery and development. Thank you. All right. I would say the new things we found here, it really is the welcome sign, the arch sign at 92 and Main. It is something we've been talking about for a while. I'm glad to hear from Kristin that some of the work that's been going on at the business level, it sounds like it's been fruitful, so we will build that into the work plan. That is an item that's going to come at a cost. Obviously, there's a lot there that staff can't do. And so we'll have to figure out how we fund and pay for the design and the permitting and development of the sign. And I do think there's an opportunity to work with the businesses to help fund that in some way.
Well, yeah. Currently, we only have a BID, you know, Business Improvement District for the hotels, right?
Correct.
You know, at some point, if we're really going to pursue, you know, robust economic development downtown, you know, I think we're going to have to consider, you know, some revenue generating, you know, entity or programs, the revenue of which can be used to, you know, plow back into things like the signage or whatever. So, you know, I don't think they can expect the city to just hand over money for this. I think the businesses need to, you know, put up, too. And we have to figure out a way that...
Yeah, and I would say, we've been talking about a downtown Business Improvement District for several years. And in recent, I would say in the last year, it sounds like there's more openness from the businesses. Now, it's really the property owners, and that's part of the challenge, is a small business can be all for it, but their property owner has to be on board.
Well, and then there's just a few property owners that could be picked off and that we could work on. I think we know who they are.
We know, we know a lot of the big property owners, right, right. You know, and then there's other things, downtown events, and these are things that we've been pursuing. Obviously, Make It Main Street was a big addition. You know, we brought the music festival downtown, and it's been a huge hit, some more things like that. I will say, with, I think we're going to have to pursue sponsorships more, which is a challenge, because we're competing with everyone else for those. But events come at cost. We can only do so much with staff before you have to pay a band, before you have to pay for equipment and infrastructure to come in. And so I think the cost of the events is as big a constraint as the staff time that it takes to put them on. The good news is, we've got a great chamber, we've got an engaged downtown business association, we've got great nonprofits, and through those partnerships, hopefully, we can make some of this stuff happen. But that's more kind of day-to-day. That's something we're always pursuing, is additional opportunities for events and activities, especially downtown. Let's see. One thing that we added that we just wanted to point out is, I think there's a very strong expectation, and I believe that you understand this as well, of when we reach the one-year anniversary of the shootings in January, that there needs to be some sort of memorial that kind of creates that memory and that recognition and the reminder that we can't let something like this happen again. And we see that as a big community process. It's a pretty heavy lift, but I think something the community is going to expect and something that is needed. So unless I hear otherwise, we will definitely be building that into the work plan. And it could be artwork, it could be some sort of installation. We don't know what that'll be. I think the community's going to have to drive that to some degree. Okay. Moving into transportation, circulation and mobility, I think, we heard a lot last night, but there's a lot of support to really finalize some of the big transportation improvement projects. We know that there are segments of the East Side Parallel Trail that are going to be completed in the next few years, connected with other projects and standalone. I'll just point out, we don't have a lot of public in the room, but the segment that will connect Rocket Farms to the newly built segment of, in the county, that ends at the property, or the city limits at Miramar, that will be completed this calendar year. Is that correct, Maz, or close to this calendar year?
We're hoping as close to it.
It's fully funded, and we'll be going out to bid soon, and...
Where again? Explain where?
It's the, so if you, if you're coming north to south, the county just built their new segment east of Highway One that ends at, around Roosevelt. And then there's a gap to, or it ends at the city line, and then there's a gap between there and where our trail ends in front of Rocket Farms.
It's basically from the barn to Rocket Farms. That's the segment.
Okay, what's the number of that segment?
That is Segment Four.
Four.
Four. And then the one that goes from there to Spindrift is?
The one from, that one is, so that, we have that existing Segment Three that goes to the Rousseau Français neighborhood, and then from there to Spindrift would be Segment Two, which we receive funding from the federal government to start design.
Right. And where is that on timeline?
It's, we're waiting for the funding source, and then we can go out and get consultants. We have to get our approval through Caltrans, and then we can get that. So that's the process we're going through right now to obtain the funding, and then we're going to start that process.
So we have funding, we have funding for it?
To start the design and the permitting. And that's a lengthy process. You know, it's in the Caltrans right of way. We've learned from all these other segments. It does take time, yeah. Bridges, Frenchman's Creek, we will have to build a bridge over Frenchman's Creek for that segment. So that will be a lengthy process.
We need to make it a less lengthy process.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I am totally serious about that. I mean, that is something that is high priority.
Much of that, I will, just so that we don't put unfair expectations on the staff that have to do this, most of those timelines are completely out of our control. They have to do with regulatory agencies and permitting, but...
Yeah, I get it, I get it. But we've also got political help here. And we need to, you know, sit on our politicians if that's what it needs, you know, needs to happen to get it done.
Yes.
It's got to be done. And I get it. I'm not saying you're in control. I'm saying we need to get it done, all of us. And if, you know, if you need me to go sleep with Mark Berman, you know, I won't, but I will buy him lunch.
Appreciate the support. We'll definitely let you all know.
Continuing that discussion, because we agree and we understand how important, I'm redirecting, the East Side Parallel Trail is. The segment then from Spindrift to Main Street is part of the North Main and Highway One Safety Project. And what's the predicted timing on that, Maz?
That one, we're hoping to go out to bid by the end of this calendar year, so we would be in construction sometime next year, hopefully.
Yeah, I've had a couple of questions from people who live on Terrace recently, like, when is that project going to get, so?
And then, and then, of course, I think the big gaping hole is from South Main to Moonridge, to Miramondie's Point Road. And we have a request in for funding for that so that we can start the design work on that. That one is also going to be challenging because of the topography. You know, the highway drops off pretty significantly. So we've got some ideas around that. But based on the conversations we've had with our legislative advisors and others, is that the transportation, the farm worker, there's a lot of pieces of that that make it a very high priority project at federal and state levels. So we're confident that we can gather support for that and get the funding moving for that, so. And then, of course, the west side is, would be the next stage, because I believe the dream is to have trails that run on both sides of the highway, up and down the coast. Okay. The other things that we've heard on this, the Kingdom Trails concept, I believe that probably fits into more of our, you know, our legislative work and our collaboration with other agencies to generate some interest in creating additional trails outside of the city limits. So we feel like that can be incorporated into our regular work. And then the big question would be the Skyway Project and what we want to do with that.
Well, I'm more with the mayor on this, I think. I just can't decide if this is a ride in the sky or pie in the sky kind of idea.
What if you're eating pie while you're on it?
That's right, yes.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
You know, it sounds, again, it's just life experience. Whatever price tag I hear on it, I just can almost guarantee it'll end up costing more. I don't think it'll pay for itself. I don't, you know, I think that, you know, I'd like to see, are there other cities like ours who've done this? But it doesn't seem like there are a lot, so part of the attraction is, yeah, let's be the first and attract all kinds of crowds here.
Actually, we would not be the first. They're building them in many places in the country right now. They're getting ready to...
Including Portland.
In Cali, okay.
Yeah, and they're getting ready to build one from Tampa to the Clearwater beaches.
So I'd be interested if something is similar to our city, similar size, similar budgets, and see how it works out for someone, because we're a small city, don't have a big budget. Frankly, I'm not even sure of the aesthetics. You know, I like driving down Highway 92 and not seeing some tram on the side there. You know, it's all, I guess, personal preferences.
Maybe you need more data. Maybe you need to be more data-driven.
Well, if the data...
We could send Robert to the Swiss Alps.
There you go.
On a Blue Ribbon Task Force study, and I will join you as...
Exactly, exactly. But I am just not sure, you know, how much tickets, how many people will really use it. I just have a lot of doubts that we get that much traffic here in terms of, that would somehow make it cost-effective in the long run. And it, and how it would get paid for still is quite unclear. I don't think I could ever vote for bond initiatives and loans to build that. So I don't know exactly how it would get built either. So anyway, those are all the questions I would have, and...
Your questions can be answered.
Well, you know, as the mayor said, whether or not now's the time for an $80,000 feasibility study. You know, would I rather pay for more CARES funding, or food pantry funding, or mental health workers? I mean, that's what we're balancing against, so. Because we've been through a lot this year, and we're trying to rebuild. So I'd either put it off for now and not rush towards a feasibility study. That, one way or another, is going to add to our, you know, costs and staff time. So it's a major project.
I'm expecting this pushback. It's an innovative project, and I think it would be wonderful if we could collaborate with the county, maybe with the city of San Mateo. They all have a vested interest in having this work. So, you know, you can always say, put it off, we don't have the money, we don't have the time. But I think in the end, this might be a wonderful innovative project that would put the coast side on the map. So that's why I'm in favor.
Well, if they have real interest, let them pay for the feasibility.
Yeah, I am, I am not interested in putting Half Moon Bay on the map. What I'm interested in is building affordable houses and getting our, having our staff work on the projects that we've already got going and finishing them, not diverting any of our attention to something that is a lovely idea. It is a lovely idea. It's a delightful idea. But as Robert said, it is also pie in the sky right now. And we've got much more important things to deal with than it. So that's, that's my opinion.
How about talking about more about public transportation? You know, to me, that makes more sense. You know, we work with, you know, Sam Tramps by having access, you know, to more public transportation. We're actually, where people... Where actually, where people, you know, go out of Half Moon Bay to work, you know, to go to school, you know, who, who goes over the hill in the morning? And that to me makes more sense. It's well less costly to invest in public transportation. I mean, everything else is just an attraction. You want an attraction like that, go to Great America or...
Oh, buses get stuck in traffic too.
I know. It's a possibility, you know? Things break, you know, a lot of things can happen. But to invest in something like that right now, I mean, I don't think we have the budget to do it. And to me, public transportation makes more sense. Especially, I mean, right now, how, you know, San Mateo County is reimagining what's gonna be happening on 101 El Camino, you know, was the future in, in transportation. That to me makes more sense.
Might I offer an idea? Because it sounds like the, the next step in this project is that feasibility study and it's money for the feasibility study. Through your support, we've been able to realign things in, in our staffing. And we are, we have developed a pretty robust grants management program and team with a staff member that is very focused on it. I would be happy, and I think it's fair, we could add this to the list, both with our team in Townsend, who is always looking for grants for us. And if we can find a grant that is not a significant drain on resources to apply for, we could explore pursuing a grant from the city side to help fund this. And, and maybe that's the, the initial contribution we could make towards something like this.
I would agree with that, but I would say that the key to it is without a significant drain on staff.
Absolutely.
So there already is a scope of work for a feasibility study. It's, I think, too big right now and too expensive. So just one piece of that would be determining whether there are obstacles and, that we can overcome in permitting and, and related, right? You're just, you're just looking at, you know, are there obstacles that are just a project killer, right? That's one thing. And, you know, a lot of different people are looking at that scope of work and how it might be shrunken down to, you know, a reasonable level. The other thing I wanted to raise is that, you know, the Coastal Conservancy, a big part of their mission is not just, you know, access along the coast, it's access, you know, to the coast. And their strategic plan and Division 21, which is the enabling legislation, says that they will prioritize innovative approaches to transportation to the coast. So I, I think that the Coastal Conservancy could be approached for, you know, $25,000 to, you know, assist with, you know, some level of analysis, as long as there were like support letters from the county. You know, we had a meeting with Sam Trans about it. They were really excited because their new mission is go beyond the bus, right? So they were very interested and came to a, a meeting of our group and also might be willing to, you know, throw money into it like a feasibility study. So a lot of discussions have been going on. A lot of people have been brought in and, and looked at this already. So we're not, we're not like starting from scratch. So I just wanted to throw out the possibility that, you know, the Coastal Conservancy might be a source of funds, just based on, you know, what they fund, so.
My last comment. I think, you know, I think this, Half Moon Bay is the jewel of San Mateo County's tourist industry. And I think that's how the county board of supervisors sees it. And that's why they've always helped us out, a lot of projects and make sure, and funded a lot of things. So, you know, Harvey, if this is an innovative, creative idea to attract more tourism, I think the county would be interested. I think Ray Mueller would be interested. We have friends there. And they might be very interested in helping to fund...
He actually gave it verbal support during his campaign.
Right, no, I remember that.
Independently of what we were working on.
Yeah, right. So they might be very interested in funding a study as well. We could look into the grants, but how does that sit with you?
Yeah, you know, money, that's, that's where it sits with me. Get the money, let's do it.
Okay. I think, I think we've got enough direction on that to, to articulate it in the, the plan. So there's a couple of other items that don't fit in those categories. And then I think there's an overarching thing I want to share on the CIP. So it, it sounds like at this time, there's consensus that a pool would be fantastic, but it, it doesn't appear that there's much for us to go on. I, I will share that in the course of our day-to-day work, it's on our minds. And, and, you know, location is, is one of the first things. And we think about it regularly. And so it's not that the city is not engaged in this, we're just not dedicating significant amounts of staff and especially funding into this. So we, we plan to continue to do that. Share, I think as a staff, we share all the same concerns as you do about the initial cost, the operating cost, the maintenance, all of that. The, the coast taxing itself might be the right approach, but I don't think the city leads that effort whatsoever.
One thing we might consider, on an interim basis at least, is maybe helping launch like a College of San Mateo pool shuttle service. Like, maybe we kick in a little money for like an Uber van, you know, that can take people, you know, over to swim and bring them home. So helping them utilize other people's resources.
And, and we're working closely with the Boys and Girls Club in the school district. And it sounds like the Sheriff's Activities League has come on board to try to at least ensure some of our, our youth residents that don't have access to swimming lessons and water safety can get that. And, you know, the Mavericks Swim Club plays an important part in that. And I know the school district is working with them. And that doesn't address all the reasons why people want a, a pool, but I think there are certain things that we have an opportunity to address and we're working towards those.
Something you said reminded me of, you know, the issue, you know, the Harbor District had talked about getting the, the city and the county to kick into, you know, like beach safety equipment and programming. I don't know where those discussions with the city went, but I, I'm guessing that that, that issue's not going to die, you know, given the, some of the, the deaths we've had because of like riptides and sneaker waves and all that kind of a thing. But I'm just wondering if, if they're gonna be coming, you know, still coming to us for, for money for that stuff.
Yeah, we were approached about funding for rescue teams and, and staff. In, in my time here, I haven't been approached by, about other things. But we, we are gonna check in regularly with, with the Harbor District, so I'm sure that will be part of those discussions as well.
I think a health district, you know, like a life services district could probably cover something like, you know, beach safety, thinking in broader terms, but...
Right. Let's see. You know, I think that covers the other list. Of course, on the far right side of the chart, Jill created another column that, we, we heard a lot of comments from you all that were more thematic, not projects or anything. It's more, you know, I'll, I'll just read some of them. You know, let's focus on completing the projects that we're already working on, they're funded or, you know, we're, we're already making progress on, let's focus on getting them done and finished. Let's make sure that we're, we're focused on maintaining the infrastructure for the things that we already have, looking through a lens where we're shifting from being reactive to proactive, those types of things. So we'll, we'll find a way to include that in the work plan this year, not only in the development of it, but also to recognize some of that in the work plan. So I, I would say the only other thing that I heard that I, I think warrants some discussion is, was around the CIP and, and some of the details in that, if, if there's opportunities to shift funding and, and move some projects around. And, and I think we're happy to do that. I will say, I think Maz has done a really great job, knowing some of the constraints we're under, in honing in on really critical projects that address a lot of your concerns. So I'm not sure how much shifting we can do, but I, I think we can sit down and, and look through it. And, and I know in years past, we've done some, I don't think we need a formal ranking process, but we kind of, what's, you know, the, you have to do it, you should do it, there's grant funding, you know? We can do a little bit of that and kind of figure out where that line is drawn on funding and, and staff time.
Well, you know, a lot of grant-making agencies have project selection criteria. And like number one is always like, you know, we prefer to fund projects that produce multiple benefits. So what are the projects that we're working on that produce multiple benefits? You know, safe transportation, maybe there's, you know, water quality benefits associated with the infrastructure too. Maybe there's, you know, habitat protection. But, you know, we wanna, we wanna focus on and spend our money on those projects that actually have multiple benefits for the public. And I think that's a good screen, rather than, you know, just one-off projects that solve like one problem. Like, what are we, you know, what are we solving here? How, how many problems are we actually solving here?
I think that's fair, yeah.
When you said that, I just raised a concern of mine. How confident are we with a continued revenue stream to fund our CARES program? I know we've gotten some good grants, but do we need to do a little more longer?
No, that, that is an important item that I, I wanted to share as well is, you know, we're, we're looking at probably about $500,000 a year to run that program. We, for this coming fiscal year, we've already got 150,000 of that covered through a grant that's, it's already done. We are in the process of applying for the AB 118 crisis grant funding that will, it won't kick in until, I think, August or so. But that is a multi-year grant program that should fill the gap for the rest of it. But, but I think when we're building the budget, we are going to have to build in some cushion to keep that program running. I think it's, there's an expectation that we're gonna continue to have that program available. Obviously, the county is gonna need to work with us and help provide funding because it serves the entire coast side. There are some exciting developments. It sounds like two cities, I, I can't share details, but two cities in San Mateo County may be contracting with El Centro in this, in the next two fiscal years to expand it. And so my hope is maybe there's some economies of scale there and that might engage the county a little bit more as well.
And in theory, it's also reducing sheriff's hours of things that they need to respond to, so maybe that could be part of the larger negotiation of county things.
I have a question about Carter Park. About how many people you think you can put in there and once it's done completely like the amphitheater?
I believe it's about 200 is what we were planning the project around, 200 people.
Yeah, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's 200 in the amphitheater and 100 potentially on the lawn.
Yeah, correct, yeah, sorry. Yeah, 200, about 200 in the seating areas and then there's the lawn space. And the park overall, I think, can fit, depending on what the event is and what they're doing, could fit about 400 people total.
I was just, because of the comment that you, you made about projects with more benefits, you know, to, to our community, you know? And again, you know, we're thinking about relocating that somewhere else where we will have more parking available, actually a bigger audience and with less restraints. I'm just thinking about that.
The, the only challenge with that is the, this project has a grant funding towards it and relocating the project to a different place would, I, I don't know if that would be allowed under our grant agreement. We can certainly look into that in more detail.
Is that a grant from Mr. Mark Berman?
That's correct.
That's where it originated. It's now with the State Parks Department.
Prop 68.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, even losing the grant, if it gains us something, it might be worthwhile, though. I don't think that should be the, the sole reason for continuing the project. That's all.
Agreed, but it just may not transfer.
There is a process. It's called reappropriation. So it's, you know, it's paperwork and things, but I've done it myself where you, you know, the legislature has, you know, created a, an appropriation where the language is bad and the money can't be used. And so you reappropriate it under new authorizing legislation. And as long as it's not in conflict with the, the funding source, you can move it. So, so there is a process.
Yeah, certainly something we can look at. I, I will share that the Johnson House property, one isn't in city limits and so the permitting goes through the county, it's, it's an additional challenge. And that, that site has some constraints and challenges that, though it looks really promising, may not be a good fit for this. But I think the point is, can we take a step back and just look at this from a bigger perspective and look at other alternatives? Okay, well, I, I think, I want to give the department heads, and we have Karen here and Ken here as well, if there's any other thoughts or any observations you've had that you think would be important for the council. We still want to give an opportunity for public comment. We have a few folks here. But otherwise, I think we're coming to the end of this, moving forward.
Maybe we could take a five-minute break?
Sure.
And then that'll give department heads a chance to come up with suggestions or questions or whatever.
Sure, sounds good. Okay, now we're calling the meeting to order.
Okay, I'm calling the meeting to order and I'm asking our city manager, should we start with public comment or is there more from city staff?
No, I think city staff was able to share their thoughts. We had included stuff in the, our thoughts in the work plan before we started the meeting. And obviously, it is the, the department head team and our staff that build that work plan. So I think just from the staff, we're so grateful to have these really productive sessions where you're listening to us, we can listen to you and the community. It's kind of a, probably an interesting exercise for the community to watch because it really is a very collaborative working, you know, relationship. So we're grateful for that. I think, am I correct, we don't really have anything else to add? We have some work to do on the work plan and we will bring it back, probably the first meeting in June for your consideration. And, and I'll just, to, to Debbie's point, we have some big public meetings between now and then that may influence what you see in that work plan, depending on what we hear in those meetings as well, so.
Great. So I will call for public comment.
You need to fill out a card, ma'am.
Crystal Lynn from the Coastside Chamber. I just, more just comments. Love everything that's being talked about. I'm shocked I'm still awake. That's how interesting this has been. Just a couple of notes in, like, in regards to more events in downtown. That comes up quite often and of course, we're all for it. And those of us who do the events, the only thing stopping us is funds. So, and it, we're, I know at least for the Chamber and for the Downtown Association, we're very cognizant of not always trying to come to the city with a handout and saying, hey, $5,000, $7,000, and we could take this event and like literally set it to like two levels above. So for instance, for the Chamber, I, since I've gotten here, have had this dream about making the Fourth of July block party. So after the parade, we get this great group of people that come down for the parade and the parade is over and they bolt. And the Chamber, prior to me coming, had already done the block party for five years, but it's always been very small and that's just a limit of funds. If we could get help getting a stage and a band down there, then we could make it a much better, more profitable event for the downtown area. So there's lots of opportunities where we've just had the ideas and not the funding and we're more than happy to do the staff time it would require to put those events on if we can just get the sponsorships to support it. And, because the other part of that, too, the staffing part, I'm a staff of one for a good chunk of the time, they're a staff of none, they're just bored run. So it's, that's our other limitation is we don't have the time to do the fundraising. We have the time to plan it. We have the time to plan it, but it's hard to balance those two. Um, thank you for putting the, uh, thoughts for the Highway 92 sign, um, and, and verbalizing that you think that that's important, too, um, that's just, it's just really nice to, to hear that come up, and we look forward to working with you on all of those projects. And again, just love everything that I'm hearing, and I am not surprised that you guys work so good together, I'm just gonna say.
Thank you, Chris Lynn. Any other public comment?
Want to make some stuff up?
Does that just conclude everything?
I, I think we're in a good space, I, I, I would be remiss, though, if I didn't just mention, obviously, this past fiscal year has been a very, very interesting time for our city and our community, but also for our team, and, uh, I, I cannot overstate how impressed I was as we went through updating the priorities and see where we had gotten on the work plan for this year, how much work was accomplished while dealing with some very, very unexpected, uh, really significant events, um, and one of the things I'm really excited about is the turmoil of staff turnover and leadership change and those things seems to be settling down, and, fingers crossed, I don't want to jinx it, but, but we, we look to be pretty fully staffed going into the next fiscal year, which can only lead to, to more great work and more accomplishments, so, uh, we really appreciate your support, but I am so appreciative of our team from top to bottom, every person has really stepped up this year and done a lot of great work, and I think it's evident in what's happening in the community, so, thank you.
I, I just want to say thank you for all the, the work and organization that went into today, you know, and last night's item, um, where we, you know, started putting all the information together for today, it's really impressive, and it was really helpful. Thanks.
Yeah, and I want to say that I think that, um, this is, has been our most successful priority-setting session yet, and only because of the work that's gone into the preparation for it, and that doesn't include just in the last month or so, it includes what happened last year and the year before that, it's, this is, as Debbie put it, an evolutionary process, and, and we are getting better and better and better at it, so...
Having to tighten your belt focuses the mind very strongly and clearly.
That, too, yeah.
And the listening sessions help a lot, because it gives us all a sense of, hmm, what are the hot issues, regardless of whether we agree or disagree, that this is what the community is thinking about, and it helps us think about, um, ways to address them before we have this meeting, and things that we need to balance, so that was great. Thank you so much for taking all these notes, while we're, our pearls of wisdom here, getting them all down, really appreciate that, it's a lot of work, and, uh, it really helped organize our thoughts and got this, uh, thing moving along, so that's great, helped build consensus, et cetera, so thank you.
I just want to say thank you, you know, thank you to all the, to everybody, every department in the city, you know, for everything, the last three months have not been easy, so, thank you.
I also thought this was really good, um, but I missed the dots, I don't know if you remember the little dots.
We just disguised the dots as spreadsheets and...